Good morning.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Dewey Beach Monthly Town Council Meeting and Public Hearing. It's being held at Dewey Beach Life Saving Station as well as via Zoom. Today is Friday, July 19, 2024. It's 3:00. With that, I'd like to convene the Town Commissioner meeting and start with the opening ceremony for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, in the name of a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as well. Next would be the roll call. Commissioner Bauer.
Present.
Commissioner Givings.
Here.
Commissioner Jazinski.
Present.
Commissioner Persinger.
Here.
And Mayor Wayne Stephens is also here. I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for two of our locals that passed away recently, Elijah Bore and Ryan Andrew. May I pray to their families? Thank you. With that, can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports. Commissioner Bauer.
Nothing on budget and finance, nothing on marketing at this point.
Commissioner.
We're going to be getting together with budget for a new chair, so that's our next topic.
Right. Commissioner Givings.
The Investment Committee met combined with the former Budget and Finance Committee, and we are now the Finance Committee. The portfolio was posted online for full review. At request of council, they have continued to keep our short funds in more predictable fixed income holdings such as T-bills. We will do longer bonds if the feds change the rates, and I'll keep them posted.
Commissioner Jazinski.
So the Infrastructure Committee met yesterday. That's what I put it as. The saga of Reed Avenue kind of continues, unfortunately. So the flaps that were being installed, or installed, the vendor saying that they did it improperly, but the water's still getting up there. One of the committee members was able to do the specific gravity of the water, and the water that's in the street is absolutely, like, brackish water. Doesn't have the rainwater 1.0s for the gravity. So he's convinced it's water from the bay, and so it's either coming through the flaps or somehow it's coming through some other type of pipe leak or whatnot. And so our RVE, our kind of advisor of the whole thing, is recommending that we do, like, a video survey for the junction box and stuff to look and see if those pipes are leaking, but the other source is just that the flaps may not be working. We have not seen any, anybody who really proved that they do work. So Bill and our town manager and our facilities team are going to try some tests that will help further isolate where the source of the problem is, but ultimately, we may need to get somebody, like, with some underwater equipment and stuff, to go out during high tide and observe these things, you know, working or not working. And the vendor still hasn't been paid, but we've got to obviously have some knowledge that these things work as they're supposed to work.
Absolutely, right. Hope that happens. Great, thank you. Commissioner Persinger.
Just want to report on the Climate Change Committee. They met last Saturday, and it was a really good meeting. We actually had, I think, either eight or nine of the 11 members here in person for the meeting, which is, it had all the seats filled around the table here, so that's a bit unusual, I think, for committees these days. There were two things I wanted to raise today, and that is, there were two recommendations from the original set of Climate Change Committee recommendations. One being a sea level rise disclosure for real estate transactions, and the second one being a public education campaign to get people to know more and understand more about climate change. The recommendations also include a recommendation that the Climate Change Committee work with the Marketing Committee to pursue both of those issues. What the Climate Change Committee would like is, is a formal charge from us asking both Climate Change and the Marketing Committee to work together. Climate Change Committee primarily on the content, Marketing Committee on the strategies for disseminating this kind of information. So it's not an urgent need to do this. The Climate Change Committee will meet again in September, I believe, so we could come back at our August meeting and make that formal charge back to both those committees. That's all I have.
What, are they meeting again?
It's probably September 7th, April 8th, right after Labor Day.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of the June 21st meeting minutes?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town manager update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we continue to improve our budget, the way we work with our budget, Sheena's done a really good job. We're putting together quarterly burn rates, or, so we look at the budget, what each one of the department heads said they proposed, and then for the first 90 days, we look and see how much they're actually spending. Sheena's done a really nice job putting that package together with a narrative for each one of the department heads, and we'll be meeting with them next week. So we continue to improve the way we're doing finances here in Dune. Also, Sheena will provide some information on the audit, how it's going so far this year. If Kate, if you could bring up a photo for me. So a new speed bump put in down on Cullen Street. I got a lot of complaints on Cullen Street because that's the cut-through from King Charles up to Route 1, and you may actually see a third one on that street if we can't get the traffic to kind of slow down a little bit. Next one, please. So this is the new EV station at Town Hall. I'll have the police chief talk about that a little bit, but that's what it looks like. Next one, please. So these are the new mats we put in on the base side over on Reed Street at the request of some of the folks that live over there that use kayaks. Next, please. And working with grottos to try to purchase at least one of these, Rehoboth's already done it, to purchase one of these for pizza boxes. What happens late at night at grottos, they close at 1:00. They sell a lot of pizzas that go out the door in these boxes, and people are around grottos, and the boxes fill the trash cans up because they're not put in properly, and they just overflow. So we're looking at grottos, working with them. We may be able to get them to buy one or two of those, and maybe starboard sauce also, so I'm continuing to work with them on that. When it comes to the crosswalks, there was some questions from Commissioner Jazinski about that. I've asked DPNL, I filled out the application, and with Del Dot, to increase the wattage on the streetlights on Route 1 between Collins all the way up to Pfeiffer's. Del Dot's got to approve it. We own the lights, but Del Dot owns the road, so they have to come back and approve. DPNL thinks they'll do it once we get the approval from Del Dot. Also, looking at the signage that says pedestrian crossings ahead yield. We have smaller signs right now as you come into town on the south side and the north side. We could put 48 by 48-inch signs up, but they would have to go in the Center Island. So that might be something that we're, when we're doing the improvements this winter on the Center Islands, that those are installed. So we'll see. And we're going to have to probably take down a couple trees in the Center Islands, even though we do trim back the trees somewhat. Still, during the summer, with the trees being close to the beacons on the Center Island, it still obstructs the beacons, and the people in the cars can't see us. We may have to take down, like, a tree or two before each one of the beacons, so we're going to be looking at that. Captain Richmond's here. He may be able to talk about the rookie test and their junior lifeguard program. The mayor and I had a really good call yesterday with the Army Corps of Engineers. This is on the million-dollar grant that we got out of Senator Coon's office for Reed Street. It was a good conversation. It was more about what the town has to greet, agree with the Army Corps to have the money and get the funds. And basically, the town would be responsible for 25% of the project. I forwarded all the documents over to the town attorney, so he could review them, but they're pretty much boilerplate used throughout, throughout the country. In about two and a half weeks, we're going to be going out to Reed Street with the Army Corps and doing a site evaluation. This is about a two-and-a-half-year project from the time we get the design done until it could be finished, so just everybody's patience, but I think the money that we're going to have is going to be well-used on that. Swede Street and Bayard Avenue, those corners, the chief's been doing a nice job having some enforcement up there. I'll have her talk about it. We are increasing the size of the stop signs at that four-way stop. We also looked at putting stop in the white lines at all four of them that you have also up at Bayard and Cullen, but we're going to have our streets repaved, and they're going to mill all that up. So instead of spending the money now to put it on the ground, we're just increasing the size of the stop signs up there, that four-way stop. I'd like to remind everybody, there's no swimming from jet skis or boats on or off our beach. We had an issue with that, but I just want to remind everybody of it. There is no swimming on or off jet skis or boats on our beach. And we are going to be clearing the bamboo down around King Charles. It's, I apologize to the public, it's rather noisy, but we got to get it cleared back because as you pull out of your car from one of the sides, you don't see the bicycles coming up King Charles, so that sometimes causes a problem. I'd like to thank Paul Perna. He's one of the folks that's developing down where the Siesta Hotel is. He donated 34, 34 of the parking bumpers, and you see them out in the parking lot. If we had to buy those parking bumpers, it would probably cost us between $1,400 and $1,500. So I'd like to thank him. And I'd also like to thank Cindy Sousa. For July 4th and July 5th, she donated meals to our parking ambassadors. She worked it out with Gary's, and our parking ambassadors were able to go in there, have lunch or dinner, and Cindy was picking up the tab. So thank you, Cindy, on that. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
Just as a clarification, Bill, the million dollars is for a pumping station?
It's going to be, so that's what we're thinking, and that's what we're hoping. It's going to be for some type of station like we have at Bellevue and Bayard, maybe not quite as big, but something like that.
Okay. All right. Chief, updates.
Hello, everyone. As Bill mentioned, we have our EV station up and running for our police vehicles. We have one truck in, it's operational, and we're still waiting on the delivery of the second truck. Once it arrives, it'll get outfitted with its lights and marked, and then we'll have both of our vehicles, which were funded by the grant that we obtained. We went operational finally with our computer-aided dispatch system yesterday. It's from 10-8 Systems. We've never had a computer-aided dispatch system at the department. We've done everything on paper. So what that means is anytime you get a call for service, everything will be logged into a computer system. We're able to put all the information in the system. We can put caution codes in there, so if officers go to an address, and there was an address where someone had a gun or a knife or anything like that, we'll have the ability to have nukes when someone responds to a call. When I get requests for information on, did you have any calls here for anything, or did you have any problems? I can look up people, I can look up anything. So we're finally getting this system, and it's going to help us a lot with our jobs and to better provide service for the town and information, feedback that it's hard for me to get. We have to go through binders of information to see if there was a call for service someone at the point. So this is going to be a great system that we have in place. We tested a new dog this week to replace Canine Jasper. We have chosen a dog, and hopefully, if his training goes well, the handler, Corporal Weppe, will be back in North Carolina to do his training in October. So that's going to, a few more months down the road, and then we'll have a replacement for Canine Jasper. Not going to announce what type of dog or his name yet, however, because last time we did that, the dog didn't do well in training, and we had to pick another dog. So we'll wait for an update on that once we make sure that the dog that we chose is going to get through the training and do well. We did hiring process training, we did oral boards, physical agilities and written tests this week on eight applicants for the October 20th Academy. I plan on offering a conditional offer this weekend to my chosen applicant, and they'll be attending the October 20th Police Academy. So that will put us up to full strength with a number of 13 officers. And that person would graduate in March and be out on the street as a full-time officer in May, just like the same process we did with our last two. Traffic enforcement, we have increased, as I said at the last meeting. We kind of have a new system in place. Anytime I get a call from anybody, a phone call, an email, or comes through dispatch and someone says, hey, they're speeding here, we need crosswalk enforcement here, I'm deploying my officers immediately, and they're doing constant enforcement in that area, and we're monitoring documented, like, what's the highest speed we're getting there, how many tickets we're riding, what are we writing the tickets for, such as the stop sign that he's putting. We had a complaint on that, that people aren't stopping, that they didn't see the stop sign, so Bill's putting in an increased stop sign. So we're basically doing everything we can to increase enforcement and speed, crosswalk, stop sign enforcement. We have officers out there all the time doing traffic now because we have more officers on the street, so we're able to do that. Our stats for the month are as follows. We ran 418 of traffic enforcement hours. That means I had officers out there, the whole department, the total of that number of hours for the month, this is for the month of June. We wrote 232 traffic citations. We had four DUI arrests. We wrote 123 parking citations. Now, this is from the police department side, of course, parking has their own numbers. We had 21 accidents in town. We had 955 calls for service in the month of June, and we wrote, we had 28 criminal arrests and 132 civil citations. So as you can see, we've, we've been pretty busy, and this isn't, the July stats are pretty, pretty high as well. So we're just going to continue to be out there, high visibility, doing lots of traffic enforcement, lots of deterrent, basically, our goal is deter, so that's why you see a lot of officers out on the street trying to deter crime. We're running a lot of citations for urinating, open alcohol with the minors and things like that. So that's pretty much it. Everything's a go, everybody's doing a great job, and we're out there, and things are going well.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to add, Todd, come up and give your report. How you doing?
Yeah.
You look great.
Do we need patrol captain? So I was asked to come today to speak on the ordinance. I was come, asked to come today to speak on the proposed ordinance change or addition to the beaches ordinances relative to sports activities, flying objects, and those active recreational activities on the beach that may pose a threat to the passive beachgoer and patron. So just do this real briefly and answer any questions on the topic. Historically, the Dewey Beach Patrol for the last 28 years has always regulated active recreational activities on the beach. So we do that by positioning and distancing, and that's basically one of the primary objectives of every day. So when people are throwing footballs, frisbees, beer pong, some of the new-fangled games, I don't even know the names of them, there's so many new ones, horseshoes, golfing, everything you can possibly think of, we distance those users away from the active and passive beachgoers that aren't involved in that situation. We also position them away from overpasses, any entrances and exits, and that's done diligently. So that's always happened. So there will really be no change if this ordinance is implemented. The only thing that it will do is positively back us by having something on the books that really gives us the legal, on paper, legal authority to manage the facility so that indeed we prevent anyone, the risk of injury to anyone that's using the beach actively and passively. So there will be no change. We're not, we're not going to be stopping sports activities in any way. It's just, we agree with the proposal 100% to have that in the books. Let's see. Going forward, again, in conclusion, we, we agree with having that proposal on the books. We do also offer, you know, we offer 16 recreational stations, so we're very unique here. We're a niche beach. We have tether balls on basically every street end, and they're used by infants all the way up to people that are in older age, all day, every day. We also have a fitness center. We also have basketball and volleyball available, and we also have a evening youth recreation program to help get people off the streets and down onto the beach using those facilities. So Dewey is all about active recreation, but doing it wisely where the right-of-way, the right-of-way goes to the passive beach user, and the active recreational individuals or people using sports activities or flying objects have to respect and distance from them based on the command of the likelihood. Simple. Things have changed in society, we're aware. More entitled-type attitude. So one of the things that we also would like is if this proposal is put on the books, we carry with us on each lifeguard stand the beach rules, the beach ordinances, the civil law. So when we can, if someone's non-compliant, instead of calling PD as the final stop, we can bring the manual to them and say, see? And, you know, reading sometimes might help. Always, always educate first. Yes, we go through a very diplomatic process. We've never, we have not had problems with this. We do not have any problems regulating sports activities. Also wanted to make that clear. There are no problems. There aren't people that are non-compliant. It's just we've never had it on the books legally to say, okay, now you got to stop. The winds are greater than 30 miles an hour. No flying objects. Or the beach is too crowded now, we have to stop all sports activities. There's never been anything on the paper, and people talk back a little bit more now than they used to, so now we can say, see? It's here. If there's any questions on that topic, then. Good. Thank you. Have any questions? Of course.
So active sports, I understand we've got balls in the air and that sort of thing. Would this include kites?
Kites, we regulate heavily anyway.
Okay. Is it already in there, or do we need to include that? That's what I'm asking.
No, we, we, well, we would consider that to be a flying object or a sport, and we would regulate that. But the way that we regulate kites now, if we have winds under 10 miles an hour and they're blowing off the east, and the kites can go over the dew line from back by the fence, we'll let people do their kites as long as it's not at maximum capacity. If we've got winds greater than 10 miles an hour coming from any other direction and we're at capacity today, no kites. We do not allow stunt kites at any time while we're on duty. Stunt kites are a different form of kite that you manipulate with high energy, and stunt, the risk of a stunt kite hitting someone, sustaining a traumatic injury, is exponential. It's not even comparable to a regular kite. So no stunt kites. So yes, stunt kites would fall under this ordinance because it's all encompassing. The language is perfect, in my opinion, for our ability to do what we've already been doing historically.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
And Ms. Everhart, from the Dewey Chamber of Commerce.
Correct. Dewey, Rehoboth. Dewey, Rehoboth. Bring this down a little bit. First, thank you for having me today, and I'm very happy to report first on the bonfires and the movies, and we really, really appreciate that partnership that we've had with the Town of Dewey Beach. I can tell you, for four weeks, the last four weeks, you entertained 590 at the movies. We had one win day when we couldn't put the screen up, and 855 at the bonfires, okay? I'm also happy to tell you that on, I think it's July 25th, we are presenting a $1,500 check to the Dewey Beach Police, and the way that works is the Chamber of Commerce can't give out scholarships or donations, but when our restaurants sign up to be a part of Restaurant Week, they pay a fee, and that's where that money comes from. So we'll be happy to do that. And just two other things if I can, real quick. The short-term rental tax that we talked about did go through. So it's at 4.5%. This means if I have a short-term rental, a hot condo, a house, apartment, whatever it is, and I'm renting it for under 180 days, so under six months, I am to collect 4.5%. I need a business license from the state, okay? And further details I don't have other than that, that I can say for sure, but it did go through. It's effective January 1, 2025, so we do have till January 1. And lastly, the state has created an EARNs program. This is for basically businesses that have employees and no current retirement program. The only exemption that I'm aware of is if you have five or less employees or you're already offering a retirement program. So we're going to have a information session on that. It will be August 6th from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning, and it'll be at the Rehoboth Beach Convention Hall. Okay? That's all I have. Oh, occupancy, sorry, sorry. Your occupancy on Wednesdays and on Saturdays from, let me see here, Week 1 through Week 5. So we're starting first week of June through today, or last week. You're up on every single weekend and on Wednesdays, so congrats on that. That's it, unless you have a question.
Carol, I have just a quick question. Do you know what the cost of a state license would be for that rental tax?
I don't yet. That's the details I'm waiting for.
You mean that's hundreds or double digits?
I don't know.
Which means that even if you've been renting your place in Dewey and paying to come, you're going to have to now also get a state license.
Exactly. I do not believe it's in the hundreds, but I haven't seen that on paper. Okay, thank you.
One quick question. You know, one of the things when we changed parking, you know, got rid of the free nights on Wednesday, did that impact the number of people that come to bonfires?
Not that I can tell yet. Not that I can tell yet. We'll do a comparison. So when I looked at, you know, I'll have to look at the first week of June all the way through the whole summer, last year and this year, and take the weather into that too, and we'll know. But it doesn't appear to be. 855 for four weeks. That's pretty good. Okay?
Doesn't seem appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is for public comment, and please be reminded, this is for non-agenda items. Once we get through that, we'll open up for the public hearing and the items. So is there anyone here?
There's this nice lady in the back here.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Pat Wright. I'm a former mayor of the town. I was here when the town was incorporated, so I have a lot of history, and there were a lot of fights way back then. Recently, I've seen a couple of emails go around that were really negative, sort of promoting, come out and fight, and I just wanted to compliment the commissioners, and all you people are now getting along. Way back in my area, we were fighting. There was nobody that was happy. People would come out, and they'd scream at you, and it was who you knew what got approved. And things have changed, and I want to compliment you for following the code, and hopefully we won't have that kind of friction going on in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for non-agenda public item, public comments? Is that a hand?
Kate has a hand up in the back.
Yes, Kate. For non-agend item. Okay.
David, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just want to preface by, it's important the town starts to follow FOIA. And the first thing is this meeting, you had an announcement, I guess it was the town manager's update, so I'm not sure how Todd got to speak and ask questions. And also, I mean, Carol's an amazing speaker, but she also got to speak and ask questions, so the town should actually put the stuff that's on the agenda in the order and follow the agenda, because otherwise it's a FOIA violation. But in response to Todd, what he had said about the vagueness, I mean, that's why there's an objection. Wars and ordinance need to be clear and specific to be enforceable, and vague language can lead to arbitrary and inconsistent enforcement, which underlines the rule of law. So I mean, I'll speak more to when the agenda item is, but you can't have a catch-all ordinance and give tickets out. You actually need to be clear. So when he had spoken, he said kites and 10-mile-an-hour winds, the Dewey Beach Patrol should produce a guidebook, and you should put it on the bulletin board. Otherwise, you're going to be given tickets for, people don't know what it is. It's just total discretion, so. I would hope the town would not pass the ordinance as a catch-all as written, because I do not see how it's legally enforceable to give tickets out there for that.
Anyone else? All right. Let's move on to the, open the public hearing. The first public hearing regarding the proposed expansion of existing conditional use for the property located at 1308 Coastal Highway, Dewey Beach, Delaware, formerly known as MAP, 23.06 parcel 20.00, located and zoning District RB2, as submitted by Reagan Derrickson, authorized member of Nalu LLC. Your floor.
Thank you, commissioners, again for the record, Aleo Batista Jr., Parkowski, Gurk and Swayze, on behalf of the applicant, Nalu LLC. We're back here for the third and final segment with respect to the application of Nalu for expansion of its conditional use. To refresh everyone's recollection, Nalu submitted a code-compliant plan initially with respect to its expansion. That plan was reviewed by this council and then referred down to the Planning Commission for further review and analysis for compliance. A very robust hearing was held before the Planning Commission. Many people spoke. The Planning Commission made its decision with respect to the plan, with respect to compliance with all code requirements. In addition, as permitted and encouraged, I think, by the code, the Planning Commission also took into consideration the comments and attached reasonable conditions to approval with respect to. to approval with respect to the plan. Those conditions being that all exterior windows, doors, including sliding glass doors, are closed at 11:00 PM except for the main entrance to allow ease of ingress and egress to help mitigate debate, any potential sound issues. With respect to the plan that's submitted, nothing's changed. It's still a code compliant plan with respect to parking, total dining area, and the requirements of Section 185 dash 25D with respect to conditional uses for restaurants. In addition, there were some questions on how's it going to be constructed? So, recently, uh, Nalu submitted some, uh, further drawings, uh, with respect to, uh, the approval of the building permit, but, uh, sometimes life has happy coincidences. With respect to those, uh, plans, uh, it is confirmed that there are going to be solid walls and framing, uh, with respect to the new area, which further adds to sound abatement. But also, what I've been informed by the engineer is that because of the new energy codes and new requirements under the building code, that those requirements will have a substantial amount of insulation in the walls, which will further add to sound abatement. In essence, we're here before you with a, a plan that meets all requirements. Nalu has expended considerable amounts of money to make sure that that plan follows the code. With respect to complaints, you know, issues with sound and the adequacy of and enforcement of the town's sound ordinances it set forth in Section 117-15, that's an issue for another day because this council can, uh, address ordinances and issues, but something to that nature goes to every business in every town. We're here under the realm of zoning, conditional use, and it is, uh, Nalu's, uh, view that they've complied with all the requirements. I'm here to take any questions that the council may have and we respectfully request that the, uh, application be approved.
Um, I, I have a question actually for the mayor and the town manager. I'm just looking through the attached documents. Did we actually post the conditional use approval on the web for attendees to be able to see like the actual, not their application, but the actual planning and zoning approved conditional use conditions? Do we post those? Like what PNC approved to send to us?
I think so.
So, I don't know if that, is that an issue? Because I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, if a member of the public sees the public notice, but it doesn't say what the, what planning and zoning specifically approved. Is that, is that a problem or no?
I don't, I don't think it's a prob, I mean, it's important for us to know what it is that was approved.
Right.
And it's important for us to discuss publicly what it is and the way of conditions that, that we might accept. But because you don't have an obligation to accept-
Okay.
-Planning Commission's recommendations, I don't think it is-
I just want to make sure we didn't have an issue with that.
That's a good question, but I don't-
It's a great point, David, and then we'll make that change in the future to, that all of, that will be up on the, the documents.
Sometimes if, if there's a bigger lapse in time between the Planning Commission meeting and a, uh, commissioner's meeting, then you might get the minutes, um, uh, of the Planning Commission meeting, but I'm sure they're not adopted.
Yeah, right.
Okay. If I may, Fred, with respect to this particular question, on the website, when you click on application, that was included on, on the town's website, when you print that out in the back of that, there's a draft ordinance, but it also contains the prior.
The prior-
The prior one was contained in that attachment.
Yeah, but what, what I'm pointing out is that no one has what planning and zoning said the con-
Uh, it's in here.
In the recommendations. No, the planning and zoning-
Oh, 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 the new, you mean, oh, I got you.
Okay, because they said-
Correct. Yeah, I got you. I thought you meant previously.
Yeah, they said, they, they said, "We recommend that you do this" and people just don't have a copy of that, was my, was my point. Um, so I do have some questions about the thing, if that's okay, either Mr. Derrickson or yourself can answer. So, first, I, I, you know, I did, uh, I did listen and observe the, the public hearing that you had with them. I want to be clear on which doors on your plan are egress and if you, um, want our town clerk to put up your plan, uh, that's certainly fine, but is it only the doors on the east side of the building and then the northeast corner are your egress doors for like fire purposes that have to kind of be open?
So, it's my understanding that the front door stays open because the people are coming in and out and that's how we're seating. And then you have doors for fire egress, which they're gonna, they have to break handle and they have to open up. And Mr. Uh-
Yeah, it won't be on this one. It'll be on the original application. Yeah.
So, the egress doors are gonna be the front doors, the existing back door of Nalu now, and then the new expansion has another back door that the fire marshal required, as you can-
So, basically, the doors on the east side of the building and then the one on the, on the northwest corner-
Correct.
Are the doors. Okay, that's, that was one question I wanted to make sure was clear. You talked about, like, what would be open, what would be closed?
Right, the sliding glass doors are not for egress.
Yeah, right, right. Um, and then the next thing, if you could kind of, um, uh, Kate could, uh, kind of zoom in a bit on where the stage is. So, what I want to understand is when you have live entertainment up there, where are their speakers and where are they facing?
Well, the speakers for a musician that would be on there are monitors that are facing east.
Okay.
And by code, I'm not allowed to have any speakers facing outwards, which we don't do now either.
Okay. So, they'll have a monitor that faces their, the way they're facing.
Faces them.
Faces them, in other words, yeah. They'll be looking at the monitor and they're gonna be looking straight west, I guess, just the way your stage is oriented. So, they would be facing west.
Yes.
And the speakers would face east on the stage. Okay, so I wanted to understand that. Um, okay, yeah, those were my two main, uh, questions.
Kate, let me come back to the speakers here, or should we?
So, so I'm, I'm anticipating that, that there're gonna be some questions, but I do think that for the benefit of the public, and I, and I understand that this presentation of exactly what the expansion is has been done before us once, before the Planning Commission. Uh, but we are required to have a public hearing today and I think we, I think we should ask you to outline what it is that, um, how it is you're expanding, just for, just for the record and for the benefit of the public.
Sure.
And that could be Reagan or, or, I could be Mr. Derrickson.
Well, it's gonna be Reagan. I just want to make sure that we have the proper, uh, exhibit on the screen. Which one, is that the one you need?
I think the, uh, the floor plan would be the best one. So, Kate, can you? Can you minimize it a little bit? Um, I'm sorry, you guys, I can't show the- Sorry, the town and you guys. Um, so the new spot is this spot right here, right? So, the existing stage is right here next to the sliding glass doors that are there now. That stage will be removed. There's a DJ booth and a closet right here that all gets removed. And then there's a new opening here to the new spot, which is, there's no windows or, except for the egress door on the back of this new building, except for the two sliding glass doors in the front, which are smaller than the existing door on the, uh, the one that's there now. Is there, is there more you'd like to know about that part?
Could, could I ask, could, could you just talk about the, the wall to the south and what, what the material and some other things?
So, the, from Design Del Marva, Kyle sent this to the town and, uh, he sent the, uh, the, the drawings that show the building more enhanced, um, just to kind of show what it would look like and how enclosed the new area would be with the new stage. But he said, "Attached some cross-sections showing the Nalu addition to be added to the public hearing. This should help clarify that there are solid walls and framing between the inside of the building and any neighbors. There was confusion in the last public meeting that the addition was open to the exterior. Due to the newer energy codes, uh, we will now have substantial amount of insulation in the walls anyway, so by default, we will have a very high sound transfer rate, uh, well exceeding code requirements. This was unintended, an unintended side benefit, uh, for the energy codes."
Thank you. Carrie?
Yeah, I, some questions again about the, the speakers. Currently, on the stage that you have right now, is, you have monitor speakers facing the performer, but then there are two speakers that face outward. There's one that faces, uh, as, as I say it, uh, one that faces west and one that faces directly east. I'm sorry, directly north. Is that, is that correct?
Hmm, sometimes speakers get moved, so whatever's been seen, but what's been checked by the town and the way I have it positioned on the plan, the way that we normally operate, no.
Okay. The, um, uh, the new stage, uh, what you're saying is the only speakers that will be in that new stage area will be speakers that face the performer?
That's correct.
I have never seen anything like that. I'm surprised that, uh-
Well, I mean, there's, I'm sorry to interrupt, the, the speakers that are in the building will all be facing the interior part. So, even though there's only speakers that are facing the musician, which is normal for anyone playing music-
Okay.
-other speakers facing the inside of the building will be here. They don't need to face-
And, and where will they be located? That's, that's my question.
Um, I'm sorry, what's that?
Where will those interior speakers be located?
If I, if I were to, I don't have that plan, but if I were to replace them right now, I put them in the corners facing inward.
Okay.
And also, what I'm supposed to do, because that's the code.
Well, exactly, sure, sure. Um, I, I, do we want to, should I continue my questions or do we want to-
Well, I, I think it might be good for us to, we, we've got dozens of emails. Um, I think it's a good time to, for you guys to, Fred, let us to let the public come out, make any additional comments. Um, Kate, you have a summary of the emails that we received for and against, um, but I'm gonna open up the public to, to come on up with any additional comments they would like to make about the Nalu expansion.
It's, it's your call, um, if you want to group the comments, um, in favor versus opposed. It's common to ask what does-
Well, I thought we'd do that and then get to the, what was in here.
Right, but if you just open it up to every speaker, then you're gonna get back and forth, which might be fine, so.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Would anybody like to come forth? Be careful, we don't have liability insurance.
I want to be sure for this.
Hi, so my name's Alan Harwood. We live at 15A Van Dyke. Um, it should say that I'm kind of a lifelong resident or visitor of Dewey, uh, back when it was incorporated and it was the Wild West of the eighties. Um, and when we decided to buy a place, we, we wanted something a little bit quieter. And we love having Nalu nearby, we love having a restaurant nearby, but this feels like it's gonna become more of a nightclub than a restaurant. And, and I'm, I understand from, from my friends, you're a great guy, that everyone says you're a great guy, but your people don't always respond to closing the doors correctly. And people who live east of this get inundated just last week on Tuesday night, um, till 11:30 at night, just really loud music. Some of it, usually it's pretty good, but sometimes it's not. Um, so, um, I should let you know that I'm also, by training, by planning, uh, by, by academic background, I'm a planner, professional urban planner for 40 years for a Fortune 200 company, and one of my specialties is small town revitalization. So, I'm not here to kind of just throw hot water on it, but, but really, you all have a tough decision. You have to balance things. And so, one thing I've learned is life is a balance, but then also don't just come with complaints, come with solutions. So, I've got a couple of those. Um, so this is a conditional use permit, so obviously you can impose restrictions and it sounds like some of them have, although they weren't on the website. But it is an incompatible use in a residential zone. This is a residential area. Most of the, the nightclubs and most of the restaurants are on the west side of, of town, on the bay side. And the loud, there's loud noise late at night and, and this should be more of a restaurant and less of a bar. So, from that kind of a use permit, um, it suggests that maybe they have to close the, down at 10 o'clock during the weekend, 11 o'clock on weekends. Restaurants do that all the time. Nightclubs don't, but I think this would be more of a restaurant. In terms of zoning, this is RB2 and, and, and our zone, it's predominantly single-family homes. The live music really buzzes belong on the, the other side and maybe in the commercial core or on the, on the bay. Um, and noise travels by line of sight, so my suggestion would be to include not just the solid frame wall in the south, but an acoustic wall on the east side. And those egress walls and what I heard him say earlier, the egress on the east side, the sliding glass doors aren't open, but that's to the west, that's where the hyatt is and that doesn't, that has much more soundproofing than single-family homes to the east. So, it's the east that is really concerning and my neighbors, uh, that pushed me to come here. So, I would suggest that an acoustic wall be included on the east side to really kind of guide that noise northward, you know, upward, uh, because it is line of sight. You see it around airports all the time, those angled walls, they disbalance and guide the noise upward. Um, so block that noise to the east is the other thing. The other, um, conditional use is about open space, green space. And this is, this is really something that's near and dear to my heart as someone who deals with infrastructure a lot. We have a real problem in this city with impervious surfaces. I think there's way too many. If you do a, a figure ground of this community, um, there's way too much asphalt. And so, reducing the amount of green space on this location is further exacerbates that. It's not gonna solve everything, but one thing they could do for mitigation is to really kind of look at some things off-site. And what I would suggest is that, um, Rodney is a great example of a street where the grass comes up to the roadway and you can park on the grass. But on Van Dyke, the asphalt goes out another 40 and 50 feet on either side, and so there's way too much asphalt. So, work to, with, with Nalu, um, make the neighborhood a little bit more, uh, impervious, actually make it more pervious, reduce the amount of impervious surfaces and, and let the, the groundwater infiltrate better. I mean, that's something I think we should be looking at in, uh, infrastructure planning throughout the city. But really, the, you know, we want grassy, sandy areas to kind of, uh, help with the drainage. The other thing that would do by reducing that, it would, would also move the parking from out, from under our windows back toward the road. Um, again, this is just more of a mitigation on-site for the, um, uh, acoustic wall mitigation in the neighborhood for, for stormwater and then restricting the hours to make it more of a restaurant and less of a, um, less of a nightclub. So, you know, to be a good neighbor, I think they have to be a better neighbor because I don't, I don't think the, the operation's really, when you make complaints about the noise, you get, "Well, we can't do anything until it's after 1 o'clock," or there's just no real enforcement. So, we need to make sure that it's built correctly and in the right way and so that the, um, the east side is protected as well as the west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else here for comments? Public comment on Nalu? Come on up.
Good day, everybody. My name is Craig Crick. I have, uh, lived and worked in the Dewey Beach and Mahogany Beach area since 1983. Um, so I have a great vision of what has happened to this town, both good and bad, um, construction and expansion of everything that's gone on. Some people do it responsibly, some people don't. Um, I've also known Reagan Derrickson for a very long time and seen him grow his businesses and work within the community, and I feel like he is definitely one of the more responsible growing businessmen in this community. I mean, he lives here, his family lives here, my kids live here, we all grew up here. He's not some out-of-town developer that's just here to make noise, make money and make trash and move away. Um, we are all here to make this town better, um, to take care of the tourists, to take care of the locals, supply a place where everyone can have a meal and a good time, um, and to address the nightclub issue. We are more of a restaurant than a nightclub. Um, our music is kind of an enhancement for our nighttime diners and then some people do stay a little later, but most of our revenue and business is driven by the table service that we have, um, with both food and drinks served at the table as everyone, I see a lot of faces I see in our restaurants, so I appreciate that. Um, but that's kind of our goal as a company with all of our restaurants. We're not here to be, um, a pack 'em in, you know, have them hang out the windows till 2:00 in the morning. We're here to serve food, serve alcohol to complement the food and allow people to have a good time and enjoy their time in the city. Um, and I believe by the plans we've seen, you know, the, the insulation and extra building of the walls, both east side and south side are, are a great enhancement to the building. It's not an open-air place where sound just goes everywhere. Um, having worked in the Nalu location, um, full disclosure, I do work for Reagan, so everybody knows, um, but I've also worked in a lot of other restaurants in the town. Currently, with the plan to actually move the stage backward into the interior of the restaurant as opposed to where it is now, will definitely help any sound issues to mitigate anything that someone might, uh, have an issue with. And as to my education, I don't think we've ever had a sound complaint that has been solidified, that we've been over the noise ordinance that is dictated by the town of Dewey Beach. So I just, to final, to finish here, everybody says Reagan's a good guy, I know, he is, I do agree with that. But I feel like he is one of the more responsible business owners in this area. He doesn't just buy things and grow things and build things and tear things down. He does it responsibly because he lives here, his whole family's from here, everyone he knows that works for us is from here, mostly, and we're college kids. But we want to do things that are responsible for the town, to make it better. We don't want to be a detriment to the town, we're here to improve things, and to hopefully make things better in this, the tourists and locals alike. So in my personal opinion, I think they've done a great job with the design to actually probably lessen the noise, the little bit of noise we make now. So I would just hopefully recommend that we approve the process and stick with the compliance issues, and we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'm trying to raise my hand also.
Just, we do the in-person first, and then we go on to those that are here for Zoom. Sorry, Jill.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Jill, call 1300 Coastal Highway. Sorry. A quick question about the distance between the stage and the sliding glass wall. I call it a sliding glass wall, it's not a door, the sliding glass wall. If you can bring up the schematic. And one, I'm curious as to how much from the performers to the outside. The other thing is, with all due respect, Craig, love you, but neither you nor Reagan live in Dewey Beach.
I didn't say live in Dewey Beach.
Right, so I get, I and my neighbors get, I and my neighbors get offended when people from out of town come in and try to tell us how to regulate our town. If I went to a Rehoboth Town meeting and complained about a noise nuisance, they would laugh me out of the meeting. You do not let, put your head down here at night, you do not put your children to bed here at night. You do not wake up in the morning here. So with all due respect, that irritates me. And then I'd like to play you something. And if you could get me how much, how much the distance between the stage and the sliding glass wall?
It's a 12 feet.
Can you hear that? Is the mic on? This is from inside my dining room at 10:15 at night, with the doors and the windows closed. I have a measure, it's measuring between 70 and 74, at 10:10, 09 at night, inside a closed structure. I'm, no reason to be dishonest with you all, I'm just saying it's too loud. I've sent you all videos I have taken, because I called the police, and with all due respect, thank you for being here, because I think you're doing a phenomenal job. The prior department was not good. And I've lived here since 1974, so I can say that. You know, it is what it is, we've written all you, you've heard from many of our neighbors. It's not that we don't want him to operate a business, we don't want it to be open to the, this, this right here. This is a, going to be totally open. Speakers, the music's going to come straight out here. This is not a solid wall, this is not insulated. You know, it's going to go all here, it's going to just infiltrate us, and it drives us batty. And I'm exhausted. Yeah, it bounces off the Hyatt. And I wish you all would listen to the people that it's affected by, which are the people who lay their head down here at night, and wake up here in the morning, and live on Van Dyke and Dickinson Street on the ocean side. We have tolerated this for so many years, we have asked Reagan to turn it down, and he hasn't. He won't, he said he didn't have to. He didn't have to close his doors, when we asked him originally to close his doors. He said he didn't have to close them because they were doors, not windows. So, you know, I'm not here to judge whether he's a nice guy or not, that has nothing to do. I'm not here to judge his business, whether it should succeed or not. I'm here to say, please be a good neighbor, which you have never been, and mitigate the noise.
Can I ask a quick question about what she was specifically talking about? You talked about you had the issues forever. The issues, have they been the same forever, or was the addition of the outside deck and the sliding glass doors, the outside deck, did that change what the issue was?
The outside deck changed it because he had open doors. But if you walk by, if you ever walked by Nalu since they opened up, I don't know what the mentality was, just maybe to say, hey, here I am, come here. Majority of our neighbors don't go there because the music's too loud. Just for dinner, just the inside.
So from your perspective of the issue, it's been the same issue before and after the deck, it hasn't changed?
But it was enclosed, so they kept the music inside, except for the music when you would walk by the front windows. We didn't have to be bombarded by their music 24/7, or whenever they play it. It could be, it could be 6:00 in the afternoon, and it's just that loud. I can't have a conversation with my father at our dinner table. You know?
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
So, just one clarification. So I think the point of the question is, is, in your opinion, is the noise that is most bothersome to you emanating from the west side through the open doors, or also through the walls facing east?
I'm, I'm south of him, so these doors here, when they're open.
Kate, you can show that, right, where she's pointing?
It's, it's, it's just unbelievable. I mean, it's just a bombardment of, it would drive, like, you feel like a mouse in an experiment that's going to say, driving you crazy. My neighbors behind, I mean, it's not just me, I'm the vocal one, because I've lived there the longest. And people are like, Jill, will you take care of this? And I'm not, you know, there's a lot of people on our street that have social anxiety, that would love to come up here and speak, but they don't have the courage. You know, some of them did write letters, some of them are afraid to write letters because they've been retaliated against. Not by you, but by the other police department. The other police department was not good, and, you know, but I'm not going there on that, I'm not going to discuss that. But people have been retaliated again, so they're hesitant to step up. And we're just saying, please, help us.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Grace Corodino. I just bought a house on Carolina Street. I was here 30 years ago, and I've come back. You just asked that question, how in the world did this application get this far with that kind of opposition? Just ask him, isn't that the obvious question? So I'm confused. All these people are saying, and I don't even know Nalu, I've not been there, but isn't that obvious? You live there and you're so affected, how can this application, and I don't know anybody, have made it this far? That would be the question I would have.
Anyone else?
Am I allowed to speak from, oh, sorry, sorry.
Diane Hanson, Van Dyke Avenue, or Street, depending whether you're on the post office or the town. Anyway, I'm against this, and the reason is there are so many property owners that have complained to me, and I've heard the noise myself. One of the experiences I've had people tell me is they walk into Nalu, and it is so loud, that they turn around and leave. And I have done that, in fact, I went to Nalu, and I was thinking of having a civic league happy hour there. And I walked in, and the music was so loud, I turned around and I left, because there's no way people could carry on a conversation, which is part of the reason having a happy hour in the first place. So the bottom line is, I think if the music's too loud, you're losing customers, Reagan, whether you know it or not. A lot of people, they just won't go there because they can't carry on a conversation over dinner. It's too loud, even at dinner, okay? So, one of the problems too, is many of the people have had experience of problems, but they've not reported it. Question is why? And I have a suggestion. This was something that was issued a while back, I don't know if you two have seen it, I'm going to get to it.
It's a handout at our desk up front.
It's a magnet that goes on your...
It's a handout that we have up front.
Right, and I'm thinking maybe we should reissue it, because there's a lot of new property owners, a lot of new refrigerators that have, you know, we found a few in our street even, right?
Right.
So I think that it might be a good idea, so that the new property owners know where to call. And I guess we need to clarify, and I would like to ask if you could, at some point today, clarify, are the police responsible, I assume they are, for noise complaints? And do they have the equipment and training they need? Because that's come up in a couple of issues, and I'm wondering, you know, why they don't, if they don't have the equipment they need, why they don't. So that I'd like you to address at some point. I think at this point, somebody, people have said that basically, Nalu's been on their good behavior since the first letter came out to the Cape Gazette, and that the noise went down. So the good news with that is, it can be done. In other words, the volume just needs to be turned down, that's really the main issue here. And that, I think with the way things are right now, I would recommend a third option for you, you can either approve it or not, or you might want to wait a year, and kind of basically put in new restrictions in terms of the doors and the windows, and every, and make sure that things are followed, because they are not always. You know, and I think if we approve it now, we're really rewarding bad behavior. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else here in Life Saving Station?
Yeah.
Yes.
Come on. Please say your name and your address.
David Karp, Collins Avenue, Levin Collins. 30-year visitor, 20-year property owner. I spoke at the Planning Exoning Commission meeting, so some of this may be redundant, but I think it's important, and I also want to offer some context. I also want to echo the comments from our former mayor. I came to a meeting five, seven years ago, swore I'd never come back. Here I am, so.
Let me got you out of the house.
Hat tip to all of you. You know, I've actually, I actually closed on my recent property, the opening night Nalu opened. I have teenage daughters who just became of age. It's a place where I used to be able to go with my daughters, have a meal, enjoy live music. And I say tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, at 17 years old, they don't want to hang out outside Vanderwendy's two or three nights a week. Funland, I can't pay them to go there anymore. The point being is it gave a place where myself, other families, other parents were able to go with their children that were completely embraced, for a wonderful meal, some live music, and yes, we would sit on the deck, because inside can get crowded. And guess what? At 11 o'clock, those doors would close, no matter how much we were eating and drinking, and they would say it's time to go. So I just, I just want to add, I happen to read some commentary in the Cape Gazette, where I didn't hear facts, I heard fear, about people saying that the powers that be feared Dewey Beach becoming a Cancun spring break. First of all, those people have never been to Cancun on spring break. Second of all, kidding aside, we shouldn't restrict a business and a town's ability to grow, a family's ability to earn a living, based on hyperbole and fear? I understand that the sound may be a little loud, but that's a separate discussion as to whether or not this business can expand. So I do think that we should have rules, I do think those rules should be enforced, but I don't think we should restrict growth. I've been coming to this town for 30 years, we have made enormous progress, all for the better. I raised my children here. So I just, as the, as the commission does decide and make decisions, that we don't live in fear of what it may become. We set ground rules, we enforce those rules, we be forward-thinking. I do not want this to be anything close to a Rehoboth or an ocean city, I am not saying that. But if you're not growing, you're dying, and we need to keep moving forward. You know, I lastly want to say that when you look at the emails, or you look at the, dare I call them the votes, having some background in marketing and surveying, I just want, I want that data to be looked at in context. How many times have we had a bad meal in a restaurant, and we seek out the manager or the owner? How many times do we have a good meal, and take the time to type a review, or to seek the management, seek the chef, and tell him it's an attaboy? So please, make sure you look at the negative comments, the negative emails, with the proper context, that that may not be what this town seeks. It's really an attempt for the squeaky wheel to get the grease. And again, I do not want to appear as if the noise is not an issue for those people. I'm just saying there is a solution that can be accomplished, and we should not take steps back and inhibit what really makes this town special. So I appreciate you all giving me the time, please be thoughtful, please really think about what is best for the town, not live in fear of what we may become. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Anyone else here in the Life Saving Station? Kate, let's open up to, let's remind everybody, three minutes, or do they get less on?
Sorry? What is the...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, no, go ahead.
And just for the record, while there was a prior public hearing before the Planning Commission, this is the opportunity to speak before this body, and this body has the final say, so, you know, if you want to be heard, even if you testified before, now's the time to do it.
Thank you, Fred. Kate?
Larissa is on Zoom.
Hi, thank you for your time and diligence in all of this. My name's Larissa Sahani, and I'm at 17D Van Dyke Street. We are the first townhouse behind Nalu, next to the Bell Buoy. So I think our corner, our back porch, probably is at the brunt of a lot of this. I want to echo everything my neighbor Alan said, I think he spoke eloquently about the sound, and he's further down than me. First and foremost, respect to all the commissioners, I feel like ordinances, you know, let's take the emotion out of everything that's being said, it makes me want to scream. It's offensive, you all are professionals, and the process is professional. I think the problem here is, the ordinance does not take into account the residential aspect of Van Dyke Street, resident this side of the street behind Nalu. And so I think at the higher level, there's an issue where the ordinances don't protect the residents. And the reason I believe you're hearing so much is, we have been living for years, I bought, I'm a 30-plus, I don't want to say how old I am, I've been, I've been in Dewey for, let's do the math, 40 years, and I've been an owner for 24, before Nalu was built. I actually built, bought in on Van Dyke Street, literally because it was the residential side. I said I didn't want to be in Dewey, I wanted quiet side. The town has done an amazing job of growing a family environment, and with that, that is families that come and families that sleep, including myself. And when my own family can't sleep, and we have to adjust, literally adjust our housing based on bedrooms, based on the backside of the house because of Nalu's noise, that's an ordinance issue. And when the beginning of this meeting starts with the chief of police, and welcome, you're doing an amazing job, thank you. But when we're talking about staffing issues at the first 10 minutes of this meeting, and how new hires, I think that goes hand in hand. I, as an owner, am not a squeaky wheel, but we have been living at a threshold of annoyance since, since the noise issue has been prevalent for years. And the reason you're hearing from so many people is, we're already at our wits' end, and now there's an opportunity for more. And I can't imagine more noise from Nalu. I am, I am, I am a pretty easygoing person, but when I can't sit out on my own porch and enjoy an evening because of the noise blaring, and so back to the gentleman that just spoke, I do think you need to put a weighted average of not people that are responding in fear, but people that live closest to Nalu that are most affected, they are not making, this isn't about food quality or personality, I'm so sick of hearing this. This is about a noise issue after 11:00 PM where people can't sleep. And so if the ordinance does not fit protecting the residents, that's an issue. And I'd like to just stick to the issue at hand. The noise after 11:00 PM is too loud, and I personally don't pick up the phone to call the police to complain over noise. I pick it up when I see a D, somebody driving and heading with their keys to a car, you better bet I call the police. If there's disorderly conduct in my house, I call the police. But I don't, we're short on police in Dewey, have been, I'm glad to hear there's more. But I think part of the context here is, you have owners who have been living at a threshold of annoyance. I tell you, I walk my dog in the morning, and half of us are out literally complaining about the noise from the night before. It is an issue, and I don't feel that the respect for the residents on Van Dyke Street is necessarily, I don't think the ordinance right now may be fitting that, and I was unaware of any revised plan. I'm trying to get through the website right now, but I didn't get notification that there was anything else posted, so I'm a little frustrated by that also. I am sure I've taken too much time, and I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Larissa. Next? Anybody else? Kate?
Nobody else reached out in chat, I'll just, if there's anyone else on Zoom who wanted to comment, if you can go ahead and unmute.
All right. Kate, can you just remind me, how many responses or how many statements did you receive from various homeowners, for and against, via email?
And Mr. Mayor, I have two really minor, but specific questions when it's appropriate, for Nalu representatives or Nalu.
Okay. Oh, while Kate's bringing that up, do you have it?
Yes.
What is it?
Final count was 11 in favor, 14 opposed.
Were any of the 11 in favor, 14 opposed, also present?
Present here today's speaker?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Carr, and anyone else?
David Karp.
Okay. One and then get for and against, okay. Commission to give, it's you. Commissioner Givens, you have a question?
Kate, could you put the floor plan back up for one second? Because there were some specifics that came up in some of the comments, and I just wanted to make sure that I understood it, and I realized that perhaps if I'm confused, other people might be confused as well. Now scroll. I'm going to stand up. Right, you can stand up with me. So.
Well, probably can't hear her. Should she take the mic?
So, do I have to put the mic?
You can take the mic with you.
Or we can come over here, we can take a tour of this. So Commissioner Givens on the road again. So this is interior, correct?
Yes.
This is all interior.
Yes.
This is the new space that they said was going to be extra protection because of the new requirements. We've got extra soundproofing here.
Correct, so this wall here plus all the logistical stuff right here with this bar.
Let's go, Lisa. How about here? Is that also going to be impacted? The east side back?
East side is all, so you got an office here, the walls are all with the soundproofing with the new energy requirements, storage here, bathroom, then there's a door right there.
Okay, so east and south are going to have extra soundproofing based of the new requirements, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Including the, sorry, including the west side here in between and all around the new sliding glass doors. Plus, if you, where the stage is now, it kind of just, sound can shoot out, hit the hyatt.
Yes.
From what they're saying, here you have all these tiki huts with thatch roofs and tables and chairs that will be more in the way than where it is now.
Okay. That, perfect. Now, the door that's open, the door that can stay open is the main egress.
The.
Main here, this one is open.
Correct.
What was the other one you were talking about?
The other egress doors?
The other one that was going to, was it going to stay open or just had to stay unlocked?
The sliding glass door, it closes.
Well, they closed at 11, but you said there was another door that would be open, and I couldn't figure out where.
There's two back, there's this door and this door, which are required for egress.
But they're closed.
They're not open. They're not open. Okay, so the only thing that's going to be open after 11 is this main entrance here.
Depending, the heat, yeah.
And you might close it if it's hot because you want to keep the air conditioning in.
Right.
Thank you. And thank you for letting me take a tour of.
Seemed like more than two questions, Commissioner.
You know, once I get my earphone, I don't shut up.
All right, so let me just put this into framework, and then we'll open up for, Kate.
Well, I might have some questions, but I don't know, I'm not sure what your process is.
I'd rather you go first.
This, first of all, I have a question for the town. Do we have a Dewey Beach police officer who has some training with respect to measuring sound levels and has the proper sound level equipment? The only person that I've heard say that they have measured any sound measurements is our town manager, and I don't, I don't know if you have.
Well, I think the first question, the first question is whose responsibility is it?
Well, it's the Dewey Beach police officer.
So by town code, by town code, it said, when I arrived here four summers ago, the police weren't actually the ones that were the primary enforcers of that. It fell under code enforcement, which at that time was the parking supervisor. So when I came in and took that over, I went ahead and continued to take a civilian and myself and go out and train them how to use the sound meter and take sound meters at the different locations around town. It's very hard to get somebody to come out and do that, do that at night. And I was trying to keep the police more available to respond to higher priorities during, especially during the weekends.
And the problem is, for probably the last 12 years, what the code has said is that it's the responsibility of a Dewey Beach police officer. And the sound level meter has to be properly calibrated pursuant to standards established by the American National Standards Institute, ANSI, and operated by an officer who has been certified by ANSI to operate the sound level meter. We haven't done that. We're not doing that now, which I think is a problem.
I do calibrate it, I do have a calibration machine that I have in my office, so I do calibrate it. I am not the certified operator under ANSI.
Well, I think we need to have a more reliable way of making these, these sound level measurements. The other thing, whenever you've reported some of the sound levels, you've provided only one sound level, and yet the code calls for two. One, DB, measured in DBA.
The other, DBC.
The other, DBC, which I understand are filters, this is just my quick Google search, DBA gets more at the mid frequencies, DBC gets more at the base level.
More the base.
Right, I'm familiar with that. But I have never heard you report on two.
So when I'm out doing my readings like I did earlier this year when this first was brought up and we received some emails, and there was something in the Cape Gazette, I went out and took readings at DBC.
At DBC.
At DBC, at Nalu, and on Van Dyke Street, and on Dickinson Street.
Okay, well, according to the code, there really should be two levels because there's the DBA, there's a DBA level during the daily hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then there's a DBC level that goes throughout the day.
Right.
That's a bit higher, but it's.
It is, it's 7:02 compared to 6:05.
So again, I think we need a more reliable way of measuring the sound levels and one that's consistent with the code, number one. Then some specific questions with respect to Nalu itself. The sliding glass doors, the new sliding glass doors, I'm just wondering how they compare to the existing door. I did, I have to give my filing system credit, I went back and I found the 2019 plans. And the door there apparently currently is a 16-foot collapsible panel door, I think that was the term it was used. Are the new doors, would the new doors be similar?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so now we're going to be tripling the open space before 11:00 PM. I mean, a number of the comments that we've gotten from people are not only that the sound is too loud after 11:00 PM, but it's also too loud for them before that time. And now we're actually going to have more exposure, open air, to that deck. And that deck is not supposed to be in any sense an outdoor music venue. I heard someone say that they enjoy coming and listening to the music on the outdoor deck, but that's not the, not the purpose. I recently had dinner at Nalu on a Sunday evening, it was 6:30, 7 o'clock, and we had the large table, it's all the way in the corner, I was sitting out by the window. You did have a performer that night, and I was just curious what the sound level was. I didn't have a sound meter, all I had is my Apple Watch certified by absolutely no one. But it said, you were consistently, that performer was consistently generating sound levels of 85 to 90 decibels. I don't know how that compares to DBA or DBC, and don't mean to suggest at all that you were violating any code requirements because that's not the standard for measurement. But it does make, at that level, does make conversation impossible unless you're shouting, even exhorting, pretty difficult as well. That's your choice, it's my choice to be there if I want to experience that kind of sound level. But I'm wondering, is there anything that you do proactively to try to ensure that the sound levels are appropriate and consistent with the code?
Well, what we already do is sometimes we close the sliding glass door about halfway to try to make sure, so it backs right up to the stage. That's what I've been doing. And just to kind of put it out there, Jill and I have our issues, and we can talk about that another time. But I didn't know anyone else had an issue until June 11th, 2024. So if everyone would have come to me and kind of explained or lettered anything, I didn't know any of this until that first letter got written to the Cape Gazette. So I never knew, and like I said, Jill and I have our own issues. If someone else would have came and known, which I have been doing everything I can since June 11th to try to be more neighborly since I now know, I didn't know before. So that's what I've been doing.
Do you ever have performers that bring their own sound equipment?
Not right now. Spooky Speaky has an amp. Spooky, Spooky Speaky has an amp. But most everyone hook into my sound system.
Okay, but if somebody brings an amp, then how would you worry about that? To avoid the amp facing that outdoor deck?
Well, they wouldn't be allowed to do it that way. They'd have to hook into my system or put the monitor in a direction that wouldn't be facing outwards.
Okay. Do you have, you showed us where the speakers would likely go in the new addition. Where do you have speakers in the existing facility now?
There's a lot of speakers. The two main speakers are actually on top of the tiki bar, way up in the high where the Big Surfer mural is. Those are the two mains, so they're well above. And all the ceiling is, has acoustical wrap in it. So they're not even directed anywhere but up.
Okay. I mean, my problem is, I think someone said earlier, maybe it was your turn today, you didn't think that sound was really an issue, but for me, I think it's the only issue that is a real problem. I mean, I, I'm on Dickinson Street. I have never heard noise in Nalu, but, but that's just me. And I don't at all discount the complaints that I've heard from many other people. There's something odd about the acoustics here where it seems to be going down Van Dyke Street. There's much less complaint, although there is some on Dickinson. So I'm having trouble feeling that we're doing something positively that will help to address the kind of sound, sound issues that people are experiencing now.
Well, right now, where the stage is, you have three directions that's going. When we move it more interior around all the new soundproofing, it's one direction. So it's not tripling, it's reducing.
Well, it's tripling the open space. You already have a 16-foot long door, sliding glass door there now. Now you're going to put two more.
I mean, the whole place opens up.
There are three places where that, that deck is exposed to the interior, or the interior is exposed to that.
But where the live music, which seems to be the issue, this is put into a more strategic spot to be less annoying to them.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm looking for, some feeling of level of competence.
Otherwise, you want to leave it the way it is now? This is, this is a better plan.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm looking, someone said there was, there's a real solution here, I'm just trying to feel confident that I know what it is and that it can be implemented.
The solution is I now know that the neighbors, how they feel, and I'll work my best within reason to be neighborly, since I now know that.
Commissioner, to be direct, whatever the code is, all we can do is follow the law. As one commentator indicated, if there's a problem with the code and how it's enforced, that's not what this decision is. You have an application that's followed all the requirements. So if someone comes to you and says, this is your law, this is what you require of me, I've submitted you everything that requires of me, now you can take into consideration external factors which have been done, reasonable conditions of approval, that has been placed on it. We can't do more than follow the law. You have a plan that complies with all the requirements under the law. How that then gets implemented and what happens going forward, those are issues that occur another time. But I can tell you, there's been no violations, and it's the intent to have none. And if there are issues, it's bad business for my client not to address them.
In a conditional use process, I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to require conditions that help us ensure that the code is.
Correct.
Exact met. Part of the code are decibel levels generated by the sound system that don't exceed levels that are in the code. What I'm looking for is some better assurance that Nalu will do a good job of staying within those level. That's, that's the kind of assurance that I'm looking for, that's the kind of solution.
I'll ask the lady for it.
But I have just one other point, too. This issue came up at the planning zoning meeting, and that is, one of the requirements for the outdoor deck is that the area shall be cleared of patrons by 11:00 PM. As I understand, current policy that's followed by Nalu, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you cut off service, so the service after 11:00 PM, but patrons are allowed to remain on the deck until they finish their drink or food. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that, that's just, to comply with the ordinance, yes. No one, you show up at 10:55, they're not going to seat you out there. You're out there at 10:55 finishing your meal, they're not going to go, get out. They're going to let you finish the meal, and you're going to go.
But the language, the language is very clear, it says cleared of patrons. Now, you made a big point about doors are not windows, sliding glass doors are not windows, so you can follow the letter of the law there. There's also the letter of the law for this provision as well. So, you know, it's, it's an inconsistent treatment of.
So, understood.
That's all I have for right now.
Commissioner Barron?
Yeah, so taking this all in from all the emails and trying to apply some common sense to this here. So the nice lady over here asked the question before, how did it get this far? So this is an RB2 district, so it's resort business district. This is an RR, like Carolina Street, it's not a residential district, it's an RB district. We changed all of the RB district to allow 4,000 square feet, what, two years ago? So when we did that, we couldn't spot zone, we had to make it the same set of rules for everybody. And that's why we're at where we're at today. So the question is, if anybody in the room here came to us and said, hey, I want to build a 2,000-square-foot house, and that's your zoning code, and we said, no, you can't do that. I would fully expect the applicant to sue us. I mean, these are our laws, right? I mean, we can't go back and change the laws now and saying, hey, Reagan, you can't be 4,000, you've got to stay exactly where you are. So we can't, we have to follow our own laws. And I think that's, so if I could separate these issues, we do have a noise issue, I recognize that, because I want to hear and recognize what everybody's saying here, especially the neighbors. So, you know, the 11, you know, the 11 o'clock, close the doors, close the windows, that's going to help. Now, does sound get through doors and windows? Of course, you can lock your doors and windows at night and you can still hear something. I hear how many fire trucks and ambulances go down Route 1 all day long. I hear the police cars sometimes, chief, and I'm glad I hear that noise. But we can't shut down all noise. I mean, that's, that's, we just can't do that, right? So we do have a law of decibel levels. Now, we can argue all day, 65, is that the right number? Is it 70? Is it 60? Should be 50? I think if we measured today's room, we're probably over our limits, so none of us could talk. You know, waves are over 65 decibels, so we can outlaw waves in the ocean. So we want to follow, you know, we need to, we need a better job of enforcing, does that need to be a police, and this is an internal discussion for us, do we need to hire an officer just for this? Do we redeploy somebody that we have? Do we have somebody that's maybe not a police officer but trained and certified to do it? And I think, because I'm trying to work towards a solution here, and I think the solution is the enforcement of the noise ordinance. And I'm pretty sure the applicant here is going to, you know, you're going to want to follow whatever our rules are.
Correct.
So closing doors and windows, and if we have complaints, and I'm thinking, if I'm that applicant, I want to put some better baffling in, or maybe I do the doors differently. The location of that stage, Kate, if you could put that up there. So the speak, you got to, I don't know if everybody's been in Nalu, but they typically don't have big bands. I mean, they're one and two players, even on Saturday night. Saturday night's probably the only night that you go past 11 o'clock, right, for music? Monday, I don't think there's any music on Monday. Tuesday is Brian O'Boyle, correct? He's a single person. Wednesday, no music. Doesn't mean you don't play music in restaurants, but there's no, there's no singers or performers in there at that point. Thursday, no music. Friday is, what'd you say, Spooky Speezy?
Frank Rains and Spooky Speezy.
Frank Rains, Elvis is there. These aren't, you know, when you have a single performer versus a whole band, it's two, two different levels. I don't think our noise ordinance would support large bands in there anyhow, no matter how small or big the stage is. But where the location of the stage is today, if you could, if you can point to it here for the audience, so the stage is right up, you know, it's right up against where the sliding door is now.
Correct.
Now it's 12 foot back. So is that better or is that worse? I'm not a sound engineer, I think that's better. Anytime you put, put a stage right next to the door, probably some noise is going to leak out through that door, no matter how solid it is. So, you know, I think internally, we need to do a better job of enforcing whatever our code is, and I think that's where we should probably work toward the solution to this. I see no reason to reject somebody on the square footage, because that's what our law is, like it or not. I mean, we, we can't, we would be, we'd be sued in a heartbeat, I think, but I'm trying to keep us away from lawsuits. If, if he was 4,500 square feet versus allowable 4,000, we would have a different conversation. But if he's living within those, within that square footage, I have a hard time, how good conscience could I vote against that?
Yes, Fred. So we've had a couple of conversations about the law in general, how it applies to restaurants, and I think it's important that we know what posture we're in right now. So Nalu, like all restaurants, is a conditional use. And conditional uses shall only be approved, and this applies equally to an expansion or an amendment of a conditional use. If the location is appropriate, the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. And I'm eliminating some of the language that relates to. And I'm eliminating some of the language that relates to parking and congestion. And then reading, finally, "The necessary safeguards will be provided for the protection of surrounding property persons and neighborhood values." That's what our code says. What that has been identified to mean in the courts is that, when it comes to conditional uses, that they're identified by code generally, and the authority has the scope to identify specific public health concerns, safety and welfare concerns, and attempt to fashion reasonably calculated remedies to address those concerns. That's the challenge in a nutshell. So if this was a first permitted use, then you wouldn't be able to treat it any differently than the next guy or gal. But because it's a conditional use, you do have some authority. So when it comes time to vote, I would like to avoid, I just want to make sure that we're applying the appropriate legal standard to the vote, to your considerations.
Thank you, Fred. David?
Yeah, so there are a couple of things that disappointed me a bit, and I want us to get to a place of yes today. And luckily, I want us to be able to figure out how to do this, and Kelly, I want you to be able to do it, and I think it could be for your neighbors as well, what you're talking about. And the things that disappointed to me is, I heard that at the initial application, you were asked about live bands, and you said something about maybe a ukulele, and then you had live music. At least some alleged you did. And then, you can address that, sure.
Absolutely, yes.
A guy with a guitar was my initial thoughts of Nalu. But when you open up and business takes hold, and there was no restriction to not have a band or anything, we adapted. But I still, like Commissioner Bauer said, I don't play these huge rock bands like the Bolling Court or anything like that.
I understand. I'm just, you know, and then the second thing was, when you had your additional, initial conditional use, it was that all the windows would be closed, right? And then when you got your deck permit, I think the assumption was is that those would close at 11:00, and then you contend, and I'm not here to argue and debate it with you, but you contend that, hey, it doesn't apply, and you have the music, but it was open, even though it was initially closed. And from my perspective, that's kind of what caused some of this problem in the last five years.
Commissioner, just to address that with respect to that application, it was the town, what was his name, who indicated that that should have been specific in there, and it wasn't. So there's an acknowledgement that, well, we look one way, you look the other way, that's gone now.
Counselor, that's in the past.
And then the third thing is, you know, we received from one of your neighbors a number of videos as part of a public comment. And as Commissioner Bauer brought up, sorry, Commissioner Prisner brought up, in those videos, we see time spans well after 11:00, people still remaining on the deck. It's not crowded with people, there are people still on the deck. So it hasn't really been followed in terms of the deck being kept clear, and we already discussed that with them.
Right.
I think you know that I'm a little disappointed.
Well, hang on now, let's talk about that for a second. Because my problem was that there was all these expansions that had people outside their place past 11:00, and then I'm supposed to close mine? That didn't seem fair to me. So that was my justification for that, all the COVID spots.
That's not, that's not what you agreed to in the conditional use. I mean, the conditional use is that your deck would be cleared, but I don't understand your point.
Going forward, whatever the law is, we're going to comply. I mean, in the past, is past, right?
So fair enough point, but where I'm kind of coming from is, you know, it's hard to necessarily always get everything spelled out okay in writing. And sometimes you just think that the windows was going to apply to these new sliding glass walls that you put in, as some people call them, or sliding glass doors that you're putting in. And then all of a sudden, you've got open doors, you know? So, you know, people ask you about bands, you know, whether it was a ukulele and something else. So we have to try to tighten it up, but there needs to be a, there needs to be a feeling that we're going to, we're going to get what was sold to us, so to speak, you know, at this. And I'm just a little concerned. I think that we have to put some tight language around this, if we're going to do it. But I'm just, I'm just a little bit concerned about these three things, where I feel like people were kind of thinking one thing, and they got something a little bit different in reality. That's basically what I wanted to point out to you.
Commissioner Gibbings?
Speaking as an in of one, sorry, I'm a scientist, and from time to time, I just have to, my experience on the deck at Nalu is that the staff has very kindly told me to move myself inside at 11:00, or shortly thereafter. I'm an in of one, but Nalu, as those of you may not know, I live very close by, and I am there quite a bit, and they tell me that you need to finish up or take your drink inside, if you please, for closing. Very kindly, but they moved me.
All right, let's bring it all to the center.
Mayor, do you have any other questions, or for me, or?
No, you can go. Or do you have, or do you have any comments, or do you have any comments about any of the testimony that we heard earlier? Certain things you want to respond to?
No, I mean, I think the issue is pretty clear. I mean, this is an application to expand the conditional use. As counsel has adequately and properly indicated, you can put reasonable conditions. The courts have said that. And then, you know, when you go to court, it's what's reasonable, what's not. No one's contesting what the planning commission indicated. Close the doors, ensure that everything is closed at 11:00. Move people out as quickly as you can as you get close to 11:00, even though that's continuing. So there's nothing that has been presented that indicates they're not going to do that. What people are saying is, "We don't think you will." That isn't what's to be decided today. Is the plan before you, are the conditions that you placed on there reasonable to address the concerns? So far, everyone says yes. What happens in the future? How you test the ordinance, right? Whether there's, you know, the police come out? Whether now, after this process, individuals are more emboldened to then complain, because maybe there is an issue? And what happens? They're going to be told, and they've got to stop or get cited. That's what's going to happen. And I think this process has gone the way it should. And you've done exactly, and asked all the questions that you should, and hopefully we've provided all adequate answers.
Thank you.
Can I ask one?
Jesus, Gary, go ahead.
And now I'm a pain in the ass. Again, I'm looking for this level of assurance that, and I take it to word, that you are going to try to abide the, abide by the code to the extent possible. Would you be willing to submit something to the town for their approval which demonstrates the placement of the interior speakers so that the town and we and the public could all be assured that that provision within the code, that all interior speakers on the premises shall not be directed towards such outside service area? Would you be willing to do something like that as a condition?
That's part of the building permit, so that'll be on the plans. So you're going to get that.
I don't know. Is that, I don't know if that's a routine part of the building permit. I'm not.
What if you were to say that they were fixed? What if you required as a condition that the speakers are fixed?
Well, that's what I'm saying. But they fix it in a way that they face the interior of the building and not the outside service area.
And that's a reasonable condition that, because it's already been done, they're sure they keep doing it.
Have you, the other issue that was brought up, somebody mentioned that, you know, you can solve the problem simply by trimming it down. The question is by how much? And maybe this is not a condition that we could impose here, but I'm just wondering if you couldn't work with the town at some point, and maybe do it in the offseason where you're not, you don't have the interference of traffic levels and that sort of thing. And just figure out, you know, using your sound system, what's an appropriate sound level that will generate what you want with inside, but still face within the limits on the exterior of the property?
Diane Hanson already said that she's noticed that things have been better since June 11, since I found out all the people had all the problems. So I already have been doing that.
Well, that's fine. All I'm looking for is some, you know, demonstration that you've been able to find the appropriate place at which you put your.
Yes, he's willing to work with the town.
All right, all right. All right, so I've been quiet. So not typical. The issues, there's three different issues here. One is the fact that we do have, within our code and how we apply our code, we don't have consistencies. So council needs to make sure that how it's written, whether who, it's a licensed person, whether it's a police officer, whether it's calibrated, how it's done, we need to make sure that what we put in the ordinance, we follow, and we put that in. The second thing that I'd like us to do is also, because there aren't any clear teeth in that ordinance, other than fines maybe imposed at a minimum of $250, is really understand what, for us to look at it from council's perspective, what are the fines for violation of noise organs? The first thing that I've always looked at is public safety, and the second is for residents' values and for their ability to enjoy their property. That's the second part of this. So we will put some clarity around the ordinances, and we'll put some teeth around the penalties associated, but that's not for this situation, not for today. The third thing is that, when we looked at other changes within the town from a conditional use, we were, I believe, we don't, we can't look at the current operator, who is a good person, who I've known for a few years. But what about the next operator? Or the next operator after that? Has nothing to do with Reagan or what they've done thus far. It's what transfers, if this property ever transfers, what has become, and how does that affect the public, which is a real issue. I'm going to ask for us for a motion, but I'm going to, if we're in agreement, a motion that would require a fixed placement of the speakers as part of the plan, so that we can ensure that everything goes in. I know, but if it's there, it's there, in that. Two, that all of the doors, not just the new doors and windows, will be closed at 11:00 as part of this, which means we're getting something if we do pass this ordinance that we didn't have before, which is a positive improvement. How do we get to this point? Lady had asked before. This is our process, and it's looking at what is legal and what has been imposed on paper is within our ordinances and can be done as part of the conditional use. All of this is about the neighbors, the residents that are close to there, the people that are enjoying, and the violation of noise. And so if we put teeth on one side, and we do whatever we can to control it, that's really an issue, not how you build in terms, but having the noise constraints in the building will also help. Following the facts, follow the ordinance, and from a ground rules perspective. I'd also ask that, you know, keep clearing it at 11:00. I realize other people, and I know who you're referring to, have taken liberties, and it's our job to make sure from an ordinance standpoint, from a town standpoint, to get those decks cleared at 11:00. But just allowing people out there because other people do it, it's not that good. All right.
I can make a motion.
You're good at it.
It's going to be a little bit long, so just let me get through it. And this is based on something I kind of did a little in advance, based on some of the public feedback. We've also kind of modified it based on, you know, our discussions we've been having today. And hopefully, when we get through it, that this will be good with the commissioners as well as the applicants. So our motion is that we approve this with these conditions being put in. Deck areas to be closed, and no persons or staff to be on deck areas after 11:00 P.M. All windows to be closed at 11:00 P.M. All doors to be kept closed and not opened after 11:00 P.M. with the exception of the egress doors located at the east side and the northwest corner of the premises. Egress doors may not be propped open after 11:00 P.M., but may be used by patrons or staff to enter or exit. Building to be fully enclosed with permanent insulated walls, double-pane glass windows, and double-plane glass doors. All speakers throughout the premises for amplified sound, whether permanent or temporary for an event, must be placed in a location and pointed in a direction approved by the town building official. This location cannot face fully or partially towards the exterior of the premises.
You're going to save us a lot of time if you start with that.
Second.
Thank you, David. I'll second that.
Any problem? Any other discussion here?
I seconded it.
I seconded it.
Well, that's.
You have to third.
I'm still, I'm still interested in this idea of working with the town. Understand what the appropriate sound level setting is within the code, but is there any way we can include something?
Well, I think that's a code issue, a town issue, not a Nalu issue.
Well, I think it provides, I'm sorry, you're shaking your head at him?
Shaking my head, yes. I mean, I think that if somebody violates a noise ordinance, they're subject to a civil penalty. If a conditional use violates a condition of their, of their permit, then they're subject to a penalty, and they could be subject to something else, which, which might be an action against their permit.
I understand. This would just be, I'm looking for some positive demonstration that there is an appropriate sound level, and that they know what it is and can set it there. And I take your point.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll vote for my motion.
Gary?
Aye.
All right, so.
Do we have to say?
David had, what?
Do we have to say why on this kind of vote?
Yes, we absolutely do have to state what our reasoning is in support of our individual votes on the record. David?
All right. I'm voting for this because I believe that the applicant with these new conditions will have a property that is a bit of business for him and a better facility for the name.
I am voting aye on this motion because it is within the parameters of the conditional use, and he is providing us assurances that windows and sliders will have an 11:00 P.M. hard stop, as will the patrons on the deck be escorted out at that time. And we have the added bonus of the increased soundproofing on south side and east side, which should help greatly.
Commissioner Prisner?
I'm voting yes, but with some reservation. It's still a yes. With some reservations, I, again, I'm still trying to feel confident that we handle all the complaints that people have about noise. I believe they're real. I believe they are experiencing some, some issues, but I am going to say that we're trusting you to follow the code. I think we're putting some trust in the town also to enhance its enforcement, to take action if necessary. I think the conditions that you agree to for this are certainly reasonable, and will certainly help to reduce the sound level certainly after 11:00 P.M. So anyway, I vote yes.
I'm voting yes, because I believe that the request follows our code and therefore is being met from an ordinance perspective to what we need. And I also believe that the myths on prior council's approval of the sliders being allowed to stay open after 11:00 gets fixed, and then in the end, we're going to have a better environment with the new build versus the old build when things are done.
I vote yes because everything was according to the building code that we established. So we're following our own laws, which I thought was very important. And then the noise side of it, like the way David articulated the conditions of what restrictions to put there, and knowing the applicant, I know they're going to do their best to follow all the code, as he always has.
So a quick word before you announce the vote. This is, I believe, the third conditional use permit that's associated with Nalu, and that all, it goes without saying that all existing conditions that were expressed in the original permit in 2007 and the subsequent permit, which was ordinance 752, remain in full force and effect.
Go.
Yes.
All right, we'll go on to the second matter.
So motion passed.
Motion passed. All right, we'll open up. Oh, no, no, you guys can leave.
We have to stand.
Hey, if we're still there, you guys can leave.
You can leave. That's why, we've got to put this up in the end, I'm telling you.
If we want a full room.
Want a full room, got to wait.
You don't want to stay for green space?
All right, number one. So open the public hearing regarding ordinance to bend Chapter 185 zoning and Chapter 1 definitions of the municipal code relating to the establishment of a minimum lawn air requirements devoted to planning in open space in the neighborhood residential NR zoning district regulating boundaries and materials used in driveways and walkways and amending the definition of green space as referred by the planning commission. Is there anyone here for public comment? Come on, Cindy.
Hi, I'm Cindy Souza. I live on West Street in the north end. I sent an email to all of you this morning. Hopefully, you've had time to read it. I know it was a long missive, but I tried to address several of the concerns. I know it was a long missive, but I tried to address several of the concerns that I have and that I know that my neighbors have as well. I guess the essence of my email this morning to you was that the code that is, that has been proposed starts off by, "We want to protect and preserve the north end." And my question is, what's the problem? What is the problem that needs to be protected or preserved? I understand that there's a myriad of issues that, is there enough parking because driveways haven't been defined? Yes, I agree, that is a problem. But that can be solved by identifying where the driveways are, and I think that that's supposed to be addressed this fall, when the streets are being repaved, and lines will now be established. But there has been, the comment that came up at the code committee meeting where this all first began was, somebody had used number 57 stone on their driveway, and that was, didn't look pretty, and wasn't in keeping with a nice view of our neighborhood. Well, I've been here for 40 years. I have gone back and looked at the pictures from when we first bought my house in the early 80s, and guess what? There was river rock there, covered the entire thing. There was pea gravel across the street, covered their entire front. There were pine needles on many of these houses. So by requiring us to now, if there is new construction, as I understand it, or if there is a replenishment to happen on any of these homes, this new code will now go into effect to establish a 25% green on each lot. I can't grow anything on the two sides of my house. There are six-foot fences there. It doesn't grow. I've tried for many years to get something to grow. It doesn't. I happen to have grass in my backyard, I happen to have a patch of grass in my front yard. I'm hoping that that's enough to meet the preservation of the north end and to make it look prettier. But I think that by enforcing, by passing this kind of an ordinance, you're placing an undue burden on the residents of that area, and trying to implement something that just simply hasn't been there before.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else here from the public?
Anybody online?
All right. That will close the public hearing. All right, move to the action item. Discuss spots voted in ordinance to mend Chapter 185 zoning and Chapter 1 definition of municipal code relating to establishment of minimum lot air requirements for planning and opening space in neighborhood residential NR zoning district, regulating the boundaries and materials used in driveways and walkways, amending the definition of green space referred by the planning commission. Commissioner Prisiger, do you want to give us a little bit of overview of that?
Sure. First of all, let me tell you what the ordinance would do, and then we can talk a little bit about the impact. Cindy, thank you for your, as you described it, long missive earlier today, it was very helpful. I think this issue largely grew out of some concerns from the town, that people were simply putting rock across the front of their house and using it as a parking lot, and pulling in vertically, just having five or six cars lined up to do that. So, there was some interest in trying to prevent that, and so the idea here was to better define what green space is. There are already some requirements in the existing town code with respect to plantings and beautification areas, but we wanted to make this specific to, and I say "we," this is something that started with the town, it went to charter and code review, came to us, we referred it to planning and zoning, and now it's back to us again for a final decision. But, so again, define green space, and then increase the requirements for green spaces, as was indicated earlier, would be 25% of the base of the lot area. So for a 5,000-square-foot house or lot area, you would need 1,250 square feet of green space. And then, all of the lot area in the front yard would have to be green space, except for allowance for 120-by-18 driveway space, or 210-by-18 driveway spaces, and then 1 4-by-18 space for a walkway. The remaining green space requirement would be distributed between the side yards and the backyard areas, and then parking would be prohibited in the green space areas. And as was indicated earlier, existing front yard spaces that are covered with non-green space materials can remain, but except for driveways and walkways, any renewal or replacement of the materials would convert these areas to green space. And then finally, driveways and walkways must have borders that contain the materials for their surfaces within the driveway or walkway spaces, so that they don't spill in, spill over into the green space areas. So what does this really mean practically? In terms of existing housing, it doesn't require any change at all. It would only be if you're building a new house, you would have to meet these requirements. Or if you're doing some renovation in your front yard, you would then have to meet some of these, you would have to then meet these requirements. The effective change of going from 25, or going from currently 15% to 25%, you're actually, in the front yard, you're actually increasing the green space requirement only by about 92 or 93 square feet. So it's, you're going from 375 up to 468 feet of green space, if I remember my calculations, I'll include it at the end. So it's not a huge requirement in terms of green space. There was some confusion at the planning and zoning meeting, where there was some discussion about how large a house could you build. This proposed ordinance would not change anything there. Your maximum house footprint within the setback areas would be 2,380 square feet on a 5,000 square-foot lot. You could, if you allocate your green space in such a way that it would satisfy the front yard requirements and then distribute it in the side yards, you could still have a pool in the backyard if you desired to do that under this ordinance. Based on some of the comments that we've received, I would suggest a couple of changes, which I think could be helpful in discussing this, but there may, there's still, based on some of the most recent emails that I've received, there's still some confusion about what the effect of this is and what the impact is. But let me tell you what the suggested changes would be. What we have drafted so far says vegetation such as grass, this is the definition of green spaces, vegetation such as grass, trees, shrubs, and other plants which are permanently planted into the ground. I would add to that, or land left and maintained in its natural condition. Then the definition goes on to say, "Use of planters or pots, including those in which the plants contained in the planter or for a property rooted in the ground, shall not qualify as green space. Permissible materials for mulch around and between shrubs and other plants include plant-based mulches, artificial mulches, and decorative rock or stone." I would add to that another sentence that says, "Artificial mulches and decorative rock or stone may be applied only in close proximity to plants or shrubs." So, if you have a situation, and someone indicated in an email today that they have a situation where they have natural mulch in an area that would, under this ordinance, I think, be required to be green space, I think if we, we should be able to allow something like that, so someone wants to put natural mulch out there, I think that that should be acceptable. So, again, bottom line is, most of the impact here would be, at least immediately if you're building a new house, you would have to satisfy these requirements. I think the materials that qualify as green space, if we make the addition that you simply can maintain the land in its natural condition, if you have trouble actually growing, growing something there, then that could be considered green space as well. Prohibiting parking, I think, would be helpful in preventing those situations where the front yard is being used as a parking lot. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions.
But you knew I was going to have questions. So my first question is actually, or just my first comment is, this is the intersection of permeability and runoff issues that we have, you know, with the north end, especially with larger houses going up. It causes more, you know, runoff and concentration of water. The parking driveways issues, which is complicated, and then just general beautification, right? And they all kind of intersect in what we're doing here. So the first question, no part of this is because of the parking driveways issue that we're doing. And so, from our town manager perspective, I want to understand, are you committed to getting the park where the driveways are clearly marked after we get the repaving project done? And even if people complain, because it's always, people are going to complain when it happens, and I want to know that, because I don't want us to kind of go through this and make this thing, and then all of a sudden, we still don't have parking strip.
There'll be parking striping into north end after the paving.
Okay. Then, the second thing I want to talk about is, oh, I think you covered it, natural state would include people who have pine trees and pine needles falling, that would be natural state. Because you definitely can't go grass if you keep your pine trees, I only want people keeping the pine trees if they want to do so, right? So I definitely want to make sure that was covered. And then, the, and you kind of tightened up on the river rock and how much people are doing or bringing there. Then, the last, the last thing I wanted to talk about is the trigger. And right now, in the ordinance, the trigger is that you can't refresh, you know, let's say you had a river rock front yard that's largely, you know, just put there, it's not surrounding the areas. And right now, you can't refresh that unless you completely meet the new requirement. And the challenge I have with that is, I think, a lot of residents who have that kind of front yard do periodically bring in, because it just kind of goes away, it goes into the ground, it just kind of disappears on them, so they do sometimes get a drop load and put a little top coat on it. And I see that requirement happening two ways. We've got our citizens who follow the rules, and will be like, "Well, I can't do this, I guess I got to do this," and they'll go to all this time and expense and have the new thing. And we have the other people who basically are just going to order the dump truck full and say, "Come and get me." And someone's going to say, "Hey, they just did this, and that's against the rules." And the town's going to shrug their shoulders and be like, "What do I really do here?" And it's, it's going to create a lot of bad feelings between people who basically aren't real followers and people who are real followers. So I thought about what the trigger could be, and I want to discuss this with you guys. The trigger for doing this is upon new construction or addition or expansion of the home, the green space requirement must be fully complied with. And it's less of a trigger than what we're talking about, but it just doesn't put us in the situation of candidly, the people who don't like to follow the rules and they think they're for everybody else, take advantage of it and just get in their dump truck and stuff, and everybody else following the rules and feeling like, "Why did I have to do this when they didn't?"
I agree with that. We always have to be consistent. Got to be consistent application every time we vary from it, we get in trouble. So, I'll see you on this day.
Just a quick comment. I think Cindy's comment, she talked about a particular type of rock or stone to use, and some people thought that wasn't beautification. From my perspective, I don't think we should get into that, deciding what's beautiful and what's not.
I agree.
And if, you know, if somebody wants, I honestly don't care if somebody wants to put decorated rock or stone over their entire front yard, doesn't really matter to me, as long as they're not parking on it, as long as they're not obstructing the legally accessible parking, which should be available on that street. And so I think there's, you know, there's a combination of making some changes to the code, tightening up some of this, increasing the green space requirement to 25%, but I think it's, you know, it's incumbent on the town as well to do what's necessary in order to reclaim some of that parking space. And maybe it's just, you know, where you've got cars, four cars, four or five cars parked pulling in vertically and using it as a parking lot, you got to put up some parking signs that says where it's appropriate and to park in the right of way, and what the correct orientation is. And I think in the north end, it's probably mostly parallel parking.
Yeah, sure.
When you're commenting on parking, are you talking about the individuals' parking spots, or the parking for the town?
The town parking spots.
Town parking, so not the individual spots?
No.
Okay.
I would just like to say that that part of all of this, I have absolutely no problem with. Identifying driveways, having people park within that driveway, I have absolutely no problem with. But then I would also ask you, Mr. Bauer, you've made comments earlier today, we need to enforce the codes that we have. Well, as I said in my email, there are five houses in the north end that have paved their entire width of their front footage. They're not supposed to. They're supposed to have two 10-foot or one 20-foot driveway. So they've been in place for three to five years now, and Bill and I have had many conversations about this, but it is, it has become a, you know what? Don't park here because that's my space. This is in front of my house. And I mentioned it at the planning committee, that there were conversations between the homeowner and somebody else who parked there. Don't park there, that's my spot. And it's not. It is a public easement or a public right-of-way to have parking. So I have absolutely no problems with that part.
I just...
And you're losing money, as I pointed out in my email to you this morning. You've lost $14,000 over 20 days for two spots, just in the north end, by not enforcing this.
Yeah, David, just a quick comment. Janine and I took our walk, and as we went down your street, there's a house on the left in which the driveway is clearly marked, and then there's two more cars that are pulled in right up to the house. And I'm like, "That's a parking spot, but who's going to park right in front of that house?"
That happens on these districts in town. There's five houses like that.
So I'm looking at it going, "I wouldn't park there, because those two cars can't get out." So, Commissioner Gimmings?
Two unrelated, but both related to this. So, Commissioner Krzyszczynski mentioned about the pine straw and stuff. Further south, it's very common, but when we cover your gardens in pine straw, that would be one of the acceptable things between the plants, that we didn't specify that. We said mulch, that's a northern thing. Pine straw is a southern thing. Could we also, that pine straw would be permissible between the plants, as the greens?
What are you saying? Pine straw is mulch? Would it be mulch?
Be used the same as mulch.
Yeah, so that would be plant-based mulch.
You kind of, okay, second. Then, this is showing my lack, so people can park in their front yards as long as they don't pave them, but then we can park them in because the street is ours, the town's, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
This would restrict that. If it's green space, this would prohibit it in green space. So you would not normally...
No, but if I have grass in my front yard and I don't care about it, then I can park my car in it.
And you want to park in the front yard?
This would be, this would prohibit that.
Okay.
I mean, there's an enforcement issue.
In the north end?
It would prohibit it.
Only in the north end?
Only in the north end.
Do we have a motion?
Were you okay with what I said about the activation thing, like the trigger?
I think so. Let me just see.
I prefer it that way.
Yeah. Can I make a comment about that? So somebody already has a paved area, especially for townhomes, and they want to just repair it, not go in and redo the whole parking lot, the asphalt, but just repair it. We allow them to go in and repair it. And I think what you're saying is, if they've got stone and the stone kind of moves and it's not as thick, basically, they're adding more stone just to repair.
Yeah.
Then we allow that now, and if I'm wrong, Dawn or Jim can correct me, but I'm pretty sure that's what we do with that situation.
If you wanted to do your whole front yard area, would that trigger the requirement?
Well, you're not, that's a change.
Right.
So I'm saying that you can keep the, my thing is, you can keep the configuration you have today, but the original ordinance was written that you couldn't add, just refresh the stone without doing it. I'm saying that the trigger to require you to comply with the requirement is the addition, is an addition or expansion of your home, or just general new construction. So if you renovate your kitchen, you don't have to have your front yard redone, you know, just the bottom line, right?
You know, part of this seems like selective enforcement of, okay, we're going to treat a certain district different than others. You know, is this something that we should be, do we need to dig into this deeper? Is it, because it's really only going to apply to the one zoning code, right?
You mean the one zoning district?
The NR district, right?
Mostly, but is it, does some of it apply to RR?
This is just the NR.
It's just NR. There's no change to NR. Okay.
But we have different requirements in the NR district than we have in RR district for one other thing, not this necessarily, but so it's not unusual to do that. I ask questions, do we want to do that?
Right. I mean, the number one complaint we get from most people about doing is, there's no place to park. Because we try to treat people differently. I think we need to treat everybody the same. You know, that's what I consider fair, but I don't know how to get to... But I don't know how to get to, is, you know, should we, should the same rules apply to every residential home, you know?
There's some discussion, perhaps in the Charter and Code Committee of doing something about that. There was an old code section that's no longer, that no longer applies, that said something to the effect that you could only access your property with your vehicle by means of the driveway. So that would prohibit the kind of situation where you're just, anybody's pulling in vertically from anywhere along the.
I just want to be, I mean, do we need to chew on this a little bit more?
But that's something, I mean, that's something that could be applied to the residential, resort residential district as well as NR. I, I guess, I accept your notion of the trigger. I guess what I would.
Do you like that idea?
What I would recommend is that we redraft this just a bit to include your trigger, but then delay this until the next meeting. Because I've gotten a number of emails that say, we just haven't had enough time to look at this, we don't understand what the impact is. And I don't want to feel like we're forcing something on people. I'd like them to at least feel some level of comfort that in fact their, their ox is not getting bored, that it's being preserved if not well served.
Well, then I can change my motion to, my motion that we table this and we oppose a revised ordinance for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I would second that.
I'm in favor of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item three.
Number three.
Oh, boy. We're already through two.
It's only one of the nicest days of the whole summer.
Might you pay overtime for this now?
See you guys. We each have stuff.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you for all the work, Cindy.
Thank you.
Public hearing regarding the ordinance for men, Chapter 105, zoning of municipal code relating to requirements of that newly constructed renovated building managed stormwater runoff and guttering and downspouts as referred by the planning commission.
I think this one's easy.
Any public comment regarding downspouts and water runoff?
Don't flood.
None?
Don't flood your neighbors. Come on.
Okay. Conversation, counsel, motion?
Well, do we want to talk about?
I think it's logical.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
I'm fine.
A motion?
Motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To adopt the ordinance.
To adopt the ordinance, yes.
Now we just, day night walks.
Review doing financials?
Yep, they look good.
You have three minutes.
I'll make it real quick. Town manager, let me just to give you all some insight on what's been going on as far as the audit. They've done their, they pulled their testing samples Monday, we got them till Tuesday. This weekend, they're going to have their preliminary first run of the financials for us to look at next week. They're wanting, they're trying to get them to me by Monday or Tuesday because I'm out Thursday and Friday, so we're trying to get everything done before that. It's been going real smooth. We had, you might call them sins of our fathers, some things from the past that weren't easily understood by the auditors, our accountant or myself, and we've made corrections to make everything so that trained monkey can come in, take care of my job, and know what's going on. As far as, as town manager said, I did, pulled quarterly financials for the, each department, showed them where they stand. You know, there's some things that are done straight line, where I just take the total, divide it by 12, it works itself out. That's like utilities and things like that. It's, so they're, you know, they may be over right now, but it's been warm. Other things like payroll are done based on number of pay periods. Right now, through the end of June, overtime's looking good, we're not worrying about that. We'll discuss July next quarter. Our transfer tax, after receiving April and May transfer tax, we are just about 50% of our budget prediction. But there's only so many properties here that are going to sell. I know we got about another $100,000 coming in from June, so that's nice, but anything we get extra is going to be used to help things that are a little low, like lodging tax. That's still coming in under. I know Carol has said everything's good, but I'm just very hesitant on that. Our accommodations tax, just on the off-season rentals, is 10% of our annual budget, so that looks really good for our in-season rentals, because we get that money in October. So the October through March rentals was very nice to us, so thank you all for renting.
I have a question. The transfer tax, does that include the siesta? Is that in that number yet?
I'll have to, I haven't looked at which properties have, I don't think it has.
Yeah, because that's a big one.
Yeah, but that's only going to sell once.
Right.
So.
Looking at this year's budget.
Yeah.
So it's not included in?
Yes, sir.
You said hotel tax was behind. It looks like according to the report, it's actually ahead of what was budgeted.
The, the hotel tax, you said? I just, the numbers that I'm seeing just aren't where we need them to get for the full year. I just, I, there's just something feels off. Our chief and her administrative assistant have been doing an amazing job of getting grants, an amazing job. So they've been able to get a lot of stuff that they've needed, and we're, we're already starting to work on the budget on their wish list. Was there any financial, any questions about June?
You know, in looking, just for, for the public record, you know, for the first three months of the year, we expected 1.6 million, we ended up a little over 1.8 million in revenue, and 1.3 million expenses, where we're down by almost $100,000 expenses. So we're looking good financially. I do like this presentation and having the multiple sheets, please, that was on the website, having the monthly financials to pull data and fund balance so you can dig into detail. I did want to note, just based on conversations that I had with Ms. Hall after the union contract, they, we were required to go retroactive to the date of the contract start, which is 4/1. Those figures are not in here, or reflected in here, those adjustments will happen in July, but that is an amount of approximately $15,000.
Yes, sir.
So it's not a great material change that's going to happen in July. But no, I think it looks great so far. We've also had good weather.
Yes.
Any questions from Ms. Hall? You're dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
So I closed a property yesterday.
Thank you.
On Clayton Street, 1.7.
Oh, I thought you bought it.
No, I did not buy it, but you're going to be getting a check, transfer tax on that one.
It'll be in the next quarter.
And a house on Ree Street, I think, closed, you know, within the last 10 days.
Everybody wants a lot of Dewey Beach.
Why not?
Less than that one, but they're all considerable.
We're all millionaires on paper. Number five, discuss a possible vote to reappoint the following members of the Board of Elections for a term of one year, Elaine Moll, Marlene Tar, and Case Alvin.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss a possible vote to reappoint the following election officials for a term of one year, Rick Barrelin, Phil Winkler, Paige Martin, Robert Day, Stephen Eckerman, Susan Trencher.
Move to a vote.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss a possible vote in ordinance to amend Chapter 113 violation penalties of the code to enforce head-in parking only in angled and perpendicular parking spaces.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been having some challenges with the, with folks backing in the parking spots. And as you know, Delaware only has their tags on the back of, the back of the vehicle. So we need, needed something with a little more teeth to enforce these folks, to force them to pull in and not back in. What we had been using recently was something in the code that says traffic control devices signs to try to enforce that. This ordinance actually spells out that they have to pull in perpendicular facing away from the road.
I'll motion to approve that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is called agenda fatigue.
Well, we were very well prepared when we got in here, we know what it says.
Number eight, discuss.
Mayor speak.
Hmm?
Mayor speak.
Discuss a possible vote in ordinance to men, Chapter 65, beaches of the code and the authority to Dewey Beach Police to prohibit activities on the beach posing danger to public safety. We heard Captain Richmond's overview on this. Well, let me stop. Is anyone here for a public comment on that? Please allow public comment to come in from Zoom.
Yeah. Can I, may I go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So you, you heard previously the mayor say, quote, "How is written and follow what's in the ordinance." You had the town manager say, "This ordinance spells it out," and that's also a quote. Georgetown used to dismiss Dewey tickets for not following what's legal. And if you go to the Rehoboth lifeguard website, 95-2, it spells out what the dangerous activities prohibited on the beach are and what they ticket for. So if Rehoboth can do it, because that's following the law, why can't Dewey? And if you, like, Rehoboth says, "No person shall engage in any of the following activities or commit any of the following acts on the beach, or shren to the city, ball-playing, horseshoe pitching," like, this ordinance, which Todd had said out of foyer, is basically a catch-all. But if you're a guest to the beach, you have no idea what's prohibited and what's not, and you're going to see what's going to happen is, let's say a racial minority comes down here, and they get targeted, but someone else doesn't because his lifeguard won't even know how to enforce it. What the town commissioners need to do is copy what Rehoboth did in 95-2, dangerous activities prohibited on the beach, where it spells out the activities that are prohibited, put them in signs, and then it's enforceable. But how can the police chief write tickets or a police officer write tickets for something that's a catch-all, and it's not enforceable, and no one's going to know? You can't fly a kite if the wind is more than 10 miles when the lifeguard's on duty, but then someone does it and they're not going to see it online. So I, I mean, we need to be visitor-friendly, resident-friendly, by actually spelling out what's prohibited and not just do some catch-all, which wouldn't, would be too vague for the law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, conversation. Gary?
I, I tend to agree that the change that's proposed here is, is not specific enough. So I, I agree with the basic problem, but I don't agree with the reasoning certainly at all. I think the problem is it's, it's just not specific. I'm not sure what would, if there are certain things you're worried about that need to be monitored and perhaps prohibited, then I think they really should be spelled out in here specifically. I don't know who would be making the decision, it's just, the term here is the beach patrol would make that decision. Is that Todd making that decision, or is that some senior officer within the beach patrol making that decision that this particular activity that needs to be prohibited? And I'm afraid that you, you know, if it's up to individual lifeguards, you could get, you know, one approach on one street and a completely different approach on another street. I, I just don't see the benefit of having something this vague. If there's something that you're worried about, if it's, if it's the use of drones during certain times of the day, or some other activities, some kite, flying kites during the day, then, you know, let's address those specifically rather than leaving something really vague like this.
We have a town attorney who, I think is an expert on how specific we need to be.
You went to law school?
So, just, I mean, from my perspective, I, I don't like trying to over-engineer stuff, and I think people need to be able to judge them. And, you know, we don't prohibit, I don't think there's anything that says we prohibit archery on the beach, but they're not, you know, a lifeguard needs to be able to tell people, no, you cannot do archery on the beach, you know? So if, if our town attorney is okay with it not being specific, I trust our lifeguards to use good judgment.
And it's making explicit that they do have that power?
Yeah, well, that's, I'm asking.
I think the goal's not to be.
So, so this is, this is just, you know, a gray, it's a gray area. So I don't think any attorney can, can tell you that this is, you know, clearly within the bounds of reasonableness or sufficiently specific or, or vague. And of course, what's going to happen is simply that in very few occasions would, would someone actually choose to defy the orders that they've been given and then challenge a ticket? So, so it's not, it's not something that alarms me terribly, but I do believe there is validity to the argument that this is, this might need some more study. We might be able to hone in a little better if we have a little more time to, to consider how to fashion this ordinance. So, I mean, based on my feedback, where I'm at is, I trust our lifeguards to use good judgment and not be overly aggressive with people. And, you know, it's, as our captain put it, sometimes people talk back a little bit more, what are you going to do about it? You know what I mean? So I want them to have some authority. I can't imagine them being like harsher than necessary on people on the beach, you know, people doing stuff.
Well, I'll just say, this, this was born out of an incident that contributed of somebody flying a drone from the beach, on the beach, in windy conditions, and having no ability to tell them they can't do it. So, go ahead, Commissioner.
And that was why I was asking about the kites. I didn't get to the drone question because I thought the captain responded to that already with the kites. However, in the proposed draft ordinance, there is nothing specific about kites or drones, so I do think this needs more consideration and more detail put in it. I love the way our lifeguards do their education with the little cards about you can't drink, and if we had similar kinds of cards about you can't do this, that would be helpful. But I don't think we have enough of that for this ordinance to go through.
Yeah, I, I think the lifeguards do a great job. A lot of respect for what they do, and, you know, I witnessed them, or not witnessed them, but I, I know of a particular instance this year where they were involved in a, in a save where it could have been the loss of two lives. So I, they do a great job. I just worry about not enough specificity here. I'm not sure who would issue the ticket, how it would be handled. I don't think lifeguards are trained in de-escalation techniques, which could be, be an issue here. So I think we need to think this, this through a bit more. One other issue, and that is, I noted that on the ocean beaches, we do have a restriction between 11:00 AM and 3:00 PM on weekends and holidays with respect to volleyball and other sports activities. We don't have that on the bayside. I'm not arguing that we should, I'm just raising the question, you know, should we look at that? Is that, should we make it more consistent with the regulations on the ocean side?
This may be one of the situations that we, in the September, October, the October, November meetings, do kind of look back and look at the incidents, reports, what happened, what were the issues, and tighten this up a little bit further. It's nothing that we, I don't think it's anything we can do right now based upon the feedback that we're getting.
And I have not observed any volleyball nets being set up on the Bay Beach. I can't speak to things being.
The ones that are permanently there.
Bay Beach? Oh, the other, yeah. The other one.
So on the Bay Beach, they get a permit from the town to operate, if they're going to put a volleyball net up on the Bay Beach?
All right. I'll motion we table this for a future meeting with revised ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, ordinance to amend Chapter 101 flood damage reduction of municipal code relating to the free board height requirements. That's not, hold on. I'm not reading from my old copy. Is that right? Discuss a possible vote to refer to the planning and zoning commission, the ordinance to amend Chapter 101 flood damage reduction of municipal code relating to the free board height requirements for the elevation of building structures and equipment. Commissioner Kerzer, just a little background.
Yeah, as part of our comprehensive plan, there was a recommendation that the town reexamine its free board requirement. Free board is simply the additional safety factor above the base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is the elevation that you need to, in terms of elevating your building to satisfy the FEMA requirements, and then you go, right now, another foot on top of that is an additional safety factor. This was considered by the Charter and Code Review Committee. They recommended going to three feet. It came to us.
to amend Chapter 101 flood damage reduction of municipal code relating to the freeboard height requirements for the elevation of building structures and equipment. Commissioner Persinger, just a little background.
Yeah, as part of our comprehensive plan, there was a recommendation that the town reexamine its freeboard requirement. Freeboard is simply the additional safety factor above the base flood elevation. Base flood elevation is the elevation that you need to, in terms of elevating your building to satisfy the FEMA requirements, and then you go, right now, another foot on top of that is an additional safety factor. This was considered by the Charter and Code Review Committee, they recommended going to three feet, it came to us. We referred this to planning and zoning several months ago. They had a couple of meetings on it, and unfortunately, they didn't come to a recommendation, a specific recommendation, but at the same time, the time period within, within which they had to make a recommendation had expired. So we couldn't get a legitimate recommendation from them. I want to make sure that if we're going to make a change like this, we follow the code, we don't have anybody, the possibility of anybody coming back and challenging us and saying we didn't follow the process. So what I'm suggesting here is that we recommend this back to planning and zoning, let them finish their work. There's some very helpful documentation here that talks about freeboard, the benefits of increasing this to three, three feet, the benefits of lower flood premiums, flood insurance premiums, the national flood insurance program it's a town participates in. So I recommend we send this back to planning and zoning.
Thank you, Gary.
I, I want to make sure everyone's clear on what we're going to get. And I'm not saying this is, there are trade-offs with doing this, and I want, everyone doesn't always understand how all the numbers kind of map together. So if we look at a bayside neighborhood in downtown Dewey Beach, the ground, sometimes, some places is one foot, but let's just say, I'll give an example, a place where the ground's two feet high, pretty close to the bank, two feet above sea level. And you'll be in a flood zone that, let's say, is an A6. So six feet is your base flood elevation with no add-on. And then you would do an add-on of three feet, that means your lowest floor is, is nine feet above sea level, but seven feet above the ground. And then we measure height at 32 feet plus that nine-foot level. So there are going to be areas where what you're going to end up getting as far as a house, which for any new construction will have to happen, and I believe that's, if it's over 50% damage, it has to be done as well. So like with major renovation, or it's damaged by a fire, they have to kind of come into compliance, right? What you frequently will happen, because communities in New Jersey have done this to be on the extra safe side and have more flood protection, is your lowest level of house ends up being where you drive in, and it's a garage that does not count as a story or anywhere like that. And then your first floor, let's say, is starting at that six plus three level, right? And so you're there, and then you end up with three stories above that. So you'll end up from the street, going to your maximum height limit that's allowable the way of it defined, you're going to end up with a house that appears four stories high, three, three finished stories, plus where you drive in. And I think, you know, aesthetically, Dewey has a long history with the 35-foot limit and what we consider with that. And I think everybody just kind of needs to be aware that getting this extra level of flood safety is going to have a side effect of people will be pushed more into choosing that kind of design. And I just want to be sure that everyone's had a clue of that.
So that new neighbor will have a house taller than the existing neighbor, and they're going to say, why is that neighbor's house taller than mine? And we're supposed to have the same set of rules?
Just visually, you know, and visually, it's going to look like a four-story.
It blocks my view. I mean, that's, that's the number one issue that we get complaints about.
Thank you for the summary, but this will go to planning and zoning if we vote on that.
I think that's the appropriate place for the debate.
So, just a quick thing, in preparing for the meeting, I had a conversation with a town clerk who, who pointed out that what we're doing here is not amending the zoning code necessarily. So there are many occasions in the past where you have chosen to send something to the planning commission that didn't have to start with the planning commission. This is one of those occasions. So you get the benefit of a double hearing and you get the benefit of their review and recommendation if you send it to them, but you're not required to, to send it to them necessarily. So I think you could elect to just put this on your next agenda and just discuss it. I think you have the flexibility to do that, that's up to you. If, if you want to send it to the planning commission, you can.
Given the, given what David just, Commissioner Juzinski said, I would prefer that it go to planning and zoning, if that, if everyone agrees, obviously. And have them provide recommendations back.
Just a question, is the only place where the specific freeboard number is included in the code, is it only in Section 101 and not in 185?
The number is, I don't think the number's in 185. I think, I think the word freeboard appears in the, in 185, but not the definition of it or not, not the value. The value appears to only show up in 101. But I mean, you, you could be subjected to an argument that someone would say that word is integral to the interpretation of the zoning code, and if you're going to change the meaning of that word, you need to treat it like you're amending the zoning code. So I, I don't think you probably would be faced with that argument, but now that you brought it up.
Is freeboard, is a definition for freeboard, I think, in the general definitions, is there not?
There's a reference to it, but the numeral doesn't appear in the definition either.
Okay, all right.
Can I have a motion?
I move that we refer this to planning and zoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number one, long, not so much. Onto the last part, number 10, comments. Commissioner Bauer.
Last meeting, I mentioned something about the formation of a public safety committee, just to get some feedback from our community on what we, maybe make some suggestions to Del Dot and get a little working group together. We can put something maybe in the next newsletter to have, you know, have the emails come to me or Kate or, or Chief or somebody. Let's just bring in, you know, let's get some, you know, some input from the community here and what they, you know, suggestions they have. Everybody has, has a opinion of flashing lights and, and there's going to be some things we can do and some things we can't do, but I'd rather get all the comments on the table and try to do it. So if we could form a little working group for that, I, I think that's, it's the times now, and then we can plan it through next year. Heck, we're almost into August, so.
Commissioner Gibbings.
I've learned a lot about sound and its transmission over the past several weeks, and it raised even more questions, and I'm glad we were able to discuss it together today. And there's going to be an ongoing attention, both in the town, about how to monitor and to respond. And I think this might be a good chance too for us, Mayor, to look at the levels that we currently have in our code or charter. I found in monitoring today's meeting, in, in non-calibrated, but not my Apple Watch, non-calibrated, that we were in violation of the noise levels several times while the room was full. Since everybody is gone, we've no longer been in violation, but when the room was just full with people, and I didn't hear anybody raising their voice or yelling today, but we were, we would have been in violation. So I'd like us to look at the numbers.
Pat's phone just triggered, let's move on over.
I'd like us to look at the numbers.
But the noise, the noise ordinance is triggered by, I think, a measurement taken at the street. So, so.
Okay.
So we heard a lot of talk about how loud it is in Nellou. That's, that's not regulated. It could be as loud in Nellou as they can make it.
It's on the outer edge of the property line.
Okay.
But we just said 72.
You already talked.
But it is, 6.5 is still very low.
That's all that I have. I would like to continue to look at this.
Commissioner Persinger.
I have no comments.
The only, the only comment is twofold. One is to reiterate thoughts and prayers towards, towards the Andrew and the Gabor family, as well as to acknowledge, we also had Mr. Tyler, Jim Tyler, who passed away on July 2nd, who served this town for many, many years. With that, can I have a motion to you, George?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.